You moved some agendas up.
I make a motion to close out the work session.
They probably moved the second in discussion.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I thought you moved two work session items. Are you putting that on a regular agenda?
Yes.
Or continue on the work session?
We're going to do, uh, she said that we could table the session.
Yeah, and when you get to the regular agenda approval for the regular meeting, then you can move to amend it to include the two work session items.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all of those in favor? Opposed, that passes. Madam Clerk?
Roll call for the seven o'clock meeting. Councilmember Rawl.
Present.
Councilmember Gomes.
Present.
Willis.
Present.
Councilmember Gilney is by Skype. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Colley. Councilmember Baker. Also present is Mayor Edwards. You have a forum.
Okay, all of those who are able to stand for the roll call qualified, the trade agreement.
The indication.
She said roll call. Did I say that? I meant indication. That's better than a roll call. That might be a roll call. Let us pray. Once again, thank God you have brought us together. And every time we come together, you remind us that we cannot make it without each other. That no matter what our destinies are, no matter what our callings are, no matter how we are to serve, we need each other. So we ask that you continue to pour out your blessings and your wisdom and your knowledge upon our leaders, our mayor, city council, our departments, their heads. Continue to guide them as well as you can continue to guide every citizen of this great city. For destiny is ours together, for great things are always happening. So with an attitude of gratitude, we thank you, while at the same time, together, we say amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna, Mr. uh, need to have a, one of the persons. Really quickly, I know that we have a lot to cover, uh, but in our rush, I have forgotten to give some birthday greetings to some very special staff. I'm gonna start with legislative specialists for District Three, the place to be, Ms. Sandra. Raise your hands if you want to. Yesterday, all right, well, happy birthday. And also, um, two that we missed, and we definitely want to give a shout out to, that is, our pastor of pastors, Mr. Warrenell Henry, celebrated a birthday back in February. And then also, Mr. Antonio Valdez-Whyla, uh, March twenty-ninth, I believe was. And last but not least, our head celebrated his special day, or celebrated tomorrow, tomorrow. Tomorrow, so let's give our mayor a.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Paul. And before you do, of course, there are cards. You guys will get those at the end of the meeting.
Thank you so much, Mr. Henry. Malfer?
First item on the agenda is the proclamation recognizing David Sim.
All of us.
All of us always go about, and a part of our city, in the county called Fulton Industrial Boulevard. Many of you know that Fulton Industrial Boulevard has gone on a major change. How many of you been to Lakeview, down Fulton? If you haven't been, you need to go. It has done some major changes. And one of the people that I have worked with here since I was a county commissioner, that holds this part of the city dear, is a man by the name of Mr. David Sim. Uh, Mr. Sim runs, uh, Miller's Ale. I know y'all don't know what Miller's Ale is, but y'all picked up plenty of packages within Miller's Ale, you just didn't know. But they do packaging for big companies like Cracker Holes and all this kind of stuff. And they've been on the, uh, been on the course, one, why they're District One, uh, Captain Rawl for all of the districts. And there's nothing that this man, we've ever asked him, that he just said no to. He has been a big contributor to this part of the community. He is in the city. His base is in the city. Not a part of that seven mile that we were fighting about. He's in the city. And he has truly been a partner for us. He's a part of the CID, and the CID has done great things. Community improvement district has done great things along the course. So let me just read this. David D. Sim is executive vice president and chief financial officer of Miller's Ale since two thousand and five. In his capacity, David is responsible for all financial reporting, cash management, internal control, and tax compliance. Prior to joining Miller's Ale, David held a variety of positions at Fortune five hundred companies, as well as smaller entrepreneurial firms. In nineteen ninety-four, David and a private equity firm called, acquired fifty million medical products division by the B.O.C. Group Limited, where David served as chief operations officer. With hard work, sheer determination, and a trust in his partner, David and his partner grew the company to one hundred million in revenue and sold it in nineteen ninety-four to Hiller Brand Industries. Mr. Sim has joined forces with the city of South Fulton by contributing financially and supporting the city's efforts to expand through strategic planning to the business sector of Fulton Industrial Boulevard. Advocating for expanded relationship, David was sponsor of Fulton Industrial and City of South Fulton job fair, and is a avid supporter of continuous efforts in advancing the mission and vision of the City of South Fulton. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and city council appreciate the partnership that is formed with David Sim. Thanks him for his unwavering support, and do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand nineteen, as David Sim's appreciation to the City of South Fulton.
So I want to thank you all, so and for your support of the city. Um, from the time even that I became a part of the life officially, you opened your doors and toured the facilities and just have been a, you know, uh, just a very helpful partner in terms of convincing other businesses that they should be a part of the city, and we truly appreciate you for that.
I want to thank you for giving us guidance on the truckload. Um, when we went through that very controversial process, you put a pattern outside, and you told us how to modify the map and what was going to be conflicting. And, um, it was very helpful for us. And most importantly, thank you. Thank you for helping us through the referendum process for cityhood. Uh, you are a major contributor and supporter, and you are part of us being a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and fellow council members, I certainly thank you for this proclamation. Uh, the city is very near and dear to my heart. Uh, Miller's Ale has been on the Boulevard for fifty-five years. We've been part of the city now for about three years. And, uh, it's totally different working in the city of South Fulton, working with the city of South Fulton than it was working with the unincorporated, uh, government of South Fulton, of Fulton County. This is the type of representation we have. This is the type of contact we have with our leaders. When we do have an issue, we sit down with council members. When we do have an issue, we sit down with, uh, Mr. Edwards, Mayor Edwards, and we resolve them. We could never get this type of attention, uh, in the unincorporated, uh, Fulton County area that we came from prior to the city. So I want to thank the city and the council and the mayor for everything they've done for business in the corridor. Uh, wish them continued success. Uh, Miller's Ale's been around for fifty-five years or so. Will be here for another twenty, thirty, forty years. And we look forward to a strong relationship with the city and its management. And by the way, we are hiring, www.millersale.com. Can't stress that enough. Way too many of our employees come from areas outside of South Fulton. Way too many. We have trouble recruiting in, in our local community. So please get the word out. We are hiring. Go to our website, www.millersale.com.
Watch the mic.
Watch the mic. Here we go. One, two, and three. One, two, and three. One more. One, two, and three. Congratulations.
Our next proclamation is recognizing Westlake Lady Lions.
All right, let's get going. Uh, first, we have something surround time. Ladies and gentlemen, it's a pleasure for all eight of us to recognize some young ladies that have done a fantastic job. And at this time, we want to, we want to honor our champions. Two years in a row, undefeated this year, the perfect season. Westlake Lady Lions Basketball Team. So, thank you, man. It was a very pleasant experience this year. It was all right. Wonderful. Thank you, man, uh, for coming out. Go home and study, huh? Listen, uh, this is a long story for me. A long journey with this lady right here. These other two guys need to tag along. But, uh, I think I started years ago, and I think I miss very many of the Westlake girls' basketball games. I got a few miles on my car to tell you about it. But, uh, it's been a pleasure, and all of us here, and my colleagues, all of us, we are so proud of this school and this, and these bunch of girls for what they have done. Now, I was in Michigan. What was I making? What was I? Why, make? Yeah, make, yeah. I was in Michigan for the game. Now, you see, Coach Hank, you can talk to her when she ain't coaching, but when she coaching, she, you can't talk to this woman. So, you know, she, we have some great girls. Uh, some of them are not here tonight. Some of them playing basketball, going to basketball practice right now. But, uh, where is Lydia? Come here, Lydia. Let me check. You gotta talk to Lydia. Lydia was the high point man for the game. Her and somebody, her and Stu.
Right.
Her and Raven. But both, what'd you say, seventeen points, baby? Eighteen, eighteen? Do it, Lydia. But this is dependent on a young lady that she has told her what to do, and she follows these instructions to the T. And as a result, I was so proud of you guys, you know what to do. You were backing a man. You even shot a fifteen foot. I almost died. But let me read, let me read this proclamation, because I know my colleagues have something they want to say. Uh, Westlake High School Lady Lions successfully defended their title and snatched the girl's seven-eight GHSI championship, defeating Colony Hills with a score of sixty to fifty-three, remade the lead for the entire game. With this win, Westlake Lady Lions have completed the first undefeated season in Westlake history and Fulton County girls' basketball history. Westlake High School principal, Mr. James Robinson, called the Lady Lions victory a sweet peak, as the Lady Lions seven-eight girls' basketball team are back-to-back state championships, state champions, two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. Mighty Westlake Lady Lions are region two seven-eight champions for the third year in a row, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and the first time two, two regional champions in school history. Coach Hilda Hankerson was named region coach of the year by the region council and the George and Jones Association. Westlake Lady Lions coach, Hilda Hankerson, coaching style has been labeled masterful and the season sensational, reserving, reserving her win of over six hundred career wins this season versus Wheeler High School. She has, she has more, more wins than any basketball coach in Fulton County. The Lady Lions finished the season ranked number one in the state of Georgia in seven-eight across all classification. The team ranked seventeenth in the nation by U.S.A. Today. At the end of the season, they were named as Max Prep's excellent, excellent twenty-five teams in the nation. I think they're number one. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and city council recognized the Westlake Lions, Lady Lions, for their exceptional performance on and off the court. Thanks Coach Hankerson for being the lady leader extraordinary, and do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, as Westlake Lion, Lady Lions Championship Day in the City of South Fulton.
Well, first, I want to say congratulations. Are y'all excited?
Yes.
So I, I want to thank you, Coach. You have done an excellent job with these ladies, and we want to keep Baby Next Year a three-peat. So again, congratulations to you. How many of your seniors? Only one. Well, you gotta come back and make sure that you're giving back to the community. Okay, but again, congratulations. We are super proud, and this will not be the last time. Congratulations, Coach Hankerson, and all the Lady Lions. Thank you for being excellent, not only on the field, but off. You're so very proud of me.
I am so proud. Um, and one of the reasons I'm proud, and the mayor would tell you, I was, I'm very passionate, and I'm not satisfied with this celebration. I want our town with banners, uh, through City of South Fulton, like they have in East Point. You know that their, they, uh, they want a one-time champion. We are two-repeat. And I remember when people used to leave, or not come to the girls' games, and they'd just show up for the, the, the boys' games. You are, you are, you ladies have made this game exciting, and I'm so proud of you all. And, um, Councilmember Gomes, and I, I promise you, we're gonna make sure that you all have banners in the City of South Fulton.
All right, Coach.
First of all, I want to thank the Westlake band for coming out. That was a great surprise. We appreciate it. And this is one of the best bands in all of Fulton County and the state. I want to say thank you to the mayor and everyone else here. Uh, we really appreciate all of your support. As Mayor has said, uh, he's been very supportive even before we ever won a state championship. Painful at times, but, um, he's always been there, surrounding us with all the love and affection, and, and cheering really, really hard. He made sure I knew he was at the state playoff game, stood up, waved his hand, made sure I knew exactly where he was sitting. And, uh, I think I heard him a little bit, too. But we are very, very excited to represent, uh, Westlake High School, to represent South Fulton. And I remember last year when Langston Hughes was standing up here, and they were here as a repeat. And I remember thinking, what would that feel like? And, uh, and it came to pass. And what Mayor Edwards said about this being an exceptional year, as you see, we only had one senior. So we did not return a truckload of seniors. Only one. And for this young group to do it is nothing short of a miracle, because this normally does not happen without a lot of seniors on the floor. And we returned only one starter. Everybody else, no offense, was sitting on the end of that bench. And but they are the ones who won, and I wanted to commend them and say thank you.
That's my referee. One, two, three. One more.
So y'all gotta say champions after we, okay?
Yell it loud on three. One, two, three.
Champions!
Listen, before we leave, I want to give recognition to Mr. Young, the band director. Take us out, Mr. Young. Trying to be a drumming, not finish. Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Next, we have adoption of the council agenda, and we have four items that was left over remaining from the work session agenda. The Old National Main Street Initiative, the discussion on a resolution to activate a downtown development authority, discussion on the resolution to, uh, for approval of the DVA funding, and a discussion on approval of procedures of proclamation resolution.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'm making a vote. I make a motion to amend the regular agenda with the four items to the work session at the top.
Thank you. I'll remove the second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes. Madam Clerk?
We will go with the Old National Main Street Initiative by Mr. Pike, economic development. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Next, we have the, um, approval of council minutes. City council minutes, minutes Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, work session and regular meeting.
I was gonna take a motion.
I make the motion approve the meeting minutes from March twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen for the work session and regular meeting.
Second. Probably move the second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes. You have it. Madam Clerk?
The next is a public hearing, public hearing and request for approval of an alcohol license, JNE Convenience Mart.
I'll entertain a motion. Hold on a minute. Uh, Madam Clerk, if Madam Attorney, if you got anything, we're gonna do the four items first.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
Okay, let's do that. Let's do it that way. We have not, can we move this second?
It, it's down on the agenda. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Pike, the Old National Initiative is next.
Please turn your phones to the opposition.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good evening again. Uh, just a very quick, uh, discussion about a very unique opportunity we have for the City of South Fulton to partner with Department of Community Affairs around an initiative to help bring some, um, energy and attention to revitalization to the Old National Corridor. Uh, just wanted to bring a proposal to the council, have some dialogue about it, and then talk about next steps. There's been studies that have been done by, uh, other entities, other municipalities, as it relates to College Park. I meant to, uh, Old National, uh, mostly done by the City of College Park. Um, as we know, and some of the great stories that I've heard since I've been here, is that it's, there was a point in time when Old National, uh, was a really booming economic hub for the area, and, and because of folks moving, we know that the impact of Atlanta coming in and tearing down the homes as it related to the airport, that really impacted. that really impacted the economic stability of Old National. And so we've seen some decline in underinvestment in the last several years that if we don't do something meaningful, we won't reverse that, that trend. So this is an opportunity for us to really be intentional about engaging in the revitalization of Old National Boulevard. One of the things that, that I've had a lot of experience in that I know is a tried and true methodology for really revitalizing an area that has underinvestment is the Main Street Program. And I want to caution us to make sure that we don't confuse Main Street Program and Downtown because they're not real.
If you have a phone, if you please silence it now.
So I want us to be careful, that while the program is named Main Street, it does not mean or designate Downtown. As we've seen the evolution of the internet, internet sales, we've seen that not only are historic corridors been impacted, or, or historic corridors were impacted by the invention of the mall, we're seeing now that commercial corridors are being impacted by internet sales, whether it be Amazon, things of that nature. And so we're seeing that the Main Street Program is really evolving to not only just mean historic cores in cities, but also commercial districts that also would benefit from the methodology that the Main Street Program offers. And so they have been, over the last couple of years, expanding what it means to be a part of the program. The thing that's very unique about the Main Street Program and that I think is important for us is that it's tailored for each community. So what works well in one community may not work in another community. And that's why that allows us to use Old National as a candidate for the program because it is tailored to a community and the dynamics are in that community at the time. And so what we would do is create a plan that's very unique just for our community that will help address the systemic issues that we've seen on Old National. And the way that we do that is through a methodology that the Main Street Program uses, which utilizes transformation strategy. And these strategies are created in concert with the community, where they come in and they have input and they have a vision and a goal around what they want to see happen in that district. We take those goals and that community vision and understanding the dynamics of the market, what's happening on the ground in the area, and then create strategies to help alleviate the negatives, but to enhance the positives in the area. So those strategies help us create outcomes that are not only visual, but also financial. And so those, those strategies really help signify and really show and prove that the investment that the city makes as it relates to Main Street Program are actually providing dividends to the community and to the city. The way that we make the strategies work is what's called the four-point approach. And so there's four areas that the Main Street Program has identified as, as tools or mechanisms to really help the strategies move forward. And so economic vitality, which is obviously a very important component of revitalizing, revitalizing an area, but also design, which is the physical aesthetics of the community. Promotion, which speaks to marketing and branding, imaging, those type of things. And organization, which is how we relate to other entities that are doing work on Old National, the government, other municipalities that are in the area, and organizations like Old National Merchants Association. So those folks will also be a part of this whole process. Or it wouldn't be if this organization were operating in a silo, it's a community approach to revitalization. I, I will say for the record, and it's been said and as we've had some internal conversations, that there's perception about issues with crime and things of that nature. I will say that law enforcement is not a strategy for economic development. It is, public safety is definitely a component of it, but thinking that we're going to arrest our way into fixing issues in, on Old National, at best is deluded. So we have to have a very strategic plan around economic development and be very meaningful about saying that we're gonna invest in Old National because it is important, it's the number one commercial corridor in our city at this point. And so it's definitely worth thinking about from an investment standpoint. And I will say that I live in a city and have lived in cities before that have said there's a part of their community that they're just gonna forget about. I came from Albany, it was the south side. I live in Atlanta, it's the west side. So I don't, I don't want us to be that community where we're saying, well, we don't go to this side of town and we're not going to invest. And so I think it's very prudent for us from an economic development standpoint to really hone in on those things that we want to make sure that we invest in. And so that's really the reason why we're presenting this today to the council. I will say that our, our, we would be managed or we would be in partnership with Department of Community Affairs, which houses the Main Street Georgia Program or the Office of Downtown Development. Some of y'all are familiar with that program, we've gone through some training that they have conducted. I will say that I actually helped train other Main Street managers in the state. So I participate in some of those trainings and am very intimate and understand how the Main Street Program works. Quite frankly, we ran one of the best Main Street Programs in the state where I came from. That wasn't by, by accident, it was a lot of hard work, a lot of community input and involvement. This shows you how the organization works. So if we do decide to do the Main Street Program, we would actually be called a nationally accredited Main Street. So Main Streets are accredited, very similar to colleges and universities. You go through a reaccreditation process where you have to answer and, and have certain key indicators met. So the national program is actually from the National Trust for Preservation. They realized early on with the inventions of the mall, that there was disinvestment in downtowns. So to correct that trend, they created a Main Street Center. Recently, they created Main Street America because now it's grown more than just downtowns. They realized corridors, the commercial corridors are being impacted by internet sales. So Amazon, Walmart, those places that have internet sales are really impacting what we're seeing happen in our corridors. Then the Georgia, Georgia Main Street Program has a contract with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, manages the Main Street Program, which would then, we would fall under for the city of South Fulton. So these are just beginning discussions. One of the things that you all are required to do, and we had some information in your packet, is identify how the program's gonna be set up. If you're gonna be an accredited Main Street Program, they do require you to have a full-time Main Street Manager whose job would be to actually manage and oversee the day-to-day operations of this program. And so that is a position that is, we have a position in the economic development budget currently that has not been filled, that we could easily convert over to fill that position. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Councilmember Mark Jackson.
Okay, Councilwoman Jackson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Pike, for your presentation. And let me reiterate, Old National, we have not been forgotten.
Yes ma'am.
Now, the last meeting we had, you were stating that you needed to hold this because a person was not here during the presentation?
Yes ma'am. They were still not available for this meeting, we did call and talk to them again. They had some conflicts. And there are a lot of councils have meetings on this Tuesday night and so they get pulled in on other meetings. And so they just weren't available.
So we're saying day, and I guess I'm trying to find out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, forgive me. So Department of Community Affairs, they have an Office of Downtown Development, which manages the program for the whole state, they coordinate the program for the state. And so we wanted to invite them to talk about the program from the state perspective and how we would relate to what they do. But they, we've had conversations with them, they're very plugged in and supportive of this initiative and so...
So they didn't come to us?
Well, yeah, so they approached us, so we had some conversations about how we could utilize strategies to revitalize Old National and so that was a recommendation that was offered by them.
Okay, and I guess where I'm going is, the practice, you would not, when did they come?
We had a phone call, so we were seeking some help, we're trying to figure out technical...
Did they contact us about this program?
Yes ma'am.
So when did they contact us?
Well, so we, well, they talked to us about creating the program after we had dialogue with them about strategies to help revitalize Old National. This came up with a discussion with them that this could be something that would be used as we look for DCA for technical assistance to help us with some of the planning and things. So this came up as a recommendation.
Because I guess what I'm asking...
Well, I don't know the specific date, but it was during a conversation that we had with them that this was provided as an alternative and a recommendation for what we were trying to accomplish.
I guess my only thing is, you did not bring it before a district, anybody, you did not feel that we needed to know anything about this prior to bringing it here?
Well, I think that we had tried to have some dialogue...
Online?
I don't coordinate those meetings, I think that was coordinated by the city manager's office. But we definitely want to have input from everyone, this is a recommendation, obviously, for the council to have discussion and dialogue, which we felt the work session was a great way to have some, some dialogue about this program.
But I think the community would like to be also, we try to involve the community on that Old National Corridor. So I guess what I'm saying, if, if I had been contacted or talked, someone had talked to me about this, then I would have brought it to my community, that would have been something that they would have been delighted to hear.
Absolutely.
So I guess what I was trying to say in coming in the near future, that if something is going on to this magnitude, at this magnitude, it needs to come before the council, at least in that district or at least include us in on this, on the process, before bringing it to us at a work session. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Green, I know that we have a lot of technical presentation, we have a lot of studies happening all over the place. It sounds like you reached out to DCA to talk about revitalizing Old National and they reached back and said that's a great idea. I would just like to know, out of all of the streets in South Fulton, how was Old National selected?
Well, the program is designed to help really create investment in areas that have underinvestment. So when you look at our city, citywide, obviously there's not, there's been lots of study, it's no secret that there's underinvestment in Old National. So knowing that there's been studies done and knowing that we have an issue that we need to address, this is a methodology in which we help accomplish that, so...
I guess why, why not South Fulton Parkway or Camp Creek or Fulton Industrial Boulevard?
Well, certainly we are looking at other options and other opportunities. We've had meetings with Councilwoman Willis talking about Roosevelt Highway. So it's not necessarily that we're just looking at one corridor and not another, or we're looking at one district and not another district. We look at all the districts and we make recommendations based on what we think would be impactful. We have, we bring those recommendations forward to the council to vet and see if there's any buy-in for them. If not, then obviously then we won't bring it forward anymore, have any more discussion or dialogue around it. But as a recommendation, as professional staff, we look at what are the things that are gonna positively impact the community and the city.
And I ask that, and I don't mean that in a challenging way. I know that there has been a lot of anxiety around the selection of Old National for certain commercial redevelopment programs. But it sounds like there is a synergy across departments in the state that this is an area because of the amount of commercial properties and because of the lack of investment for decades now, that this is a prime area for us to redevelop. And that that's not one person's individual idea, but several people looking at our city are coming to the same conclusion about the economic development opportunities that are available. And what you said in your presentation was the number one corridor in South Fulton.
Well, obviously it's no secret that we have more commercial businesses on Old National than other corridors in, in the community. So that's not, you know, any top level information.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Gumsen?
Thank you, Mr. Pike. I do have a few questions. So you did mention that the director is already budgeted for and this will be in your burden?
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, I've seen in some cities where they kind of split up the director and the economic. So would, could this be a dual role or anything like that, or it just be...
So, so you're required to have a full-time person, eighty percent of their time is dedicated specifically for the district. So obviously, my time would not allow for that as I have, you know, we have a city that's eighty-five square miles and so there's obviously a lot of work to be done in the city outside of that. But we think that Old National is important enough that it does need that dedicated attention. And so this was an opportunity to be able to do that and still keep the energy of the rest of the city that there's other economic opportunities.
So can you give an estimate of the amount of, I guess, dollars that will come with something like the Main Street Program or resources, type of resources that come with investing in this type of...
Absolutely. So a lot of the things that are benefited to us is partnering with Department of Community Affairs is really the technical assistance. So applying for grants, being able to do design. So if we want to take a plaza and we want to envision what that plaza would look like if it had a facade grant, we use the design studio at DCA where they would then go redesign the facade of this property that's in the district. And so then we could go to the property owner and get them to partner with the city to actually do this update to the exterior design. So there's a lot of synergies around that, things that we wouldn't normally be able to afford as a municipality. As you know, to have design work done upwards of ten, fifteen thousand dollars. And so they're able to help us do that in partnership because we are members of the program. And so, so those two things alone are definitely a benefit to us. But also the opportunity for training, the opportunity for, to have, to meet people that may not necessarily be connected to the corridor and have them come and have dialogues about what we're doing here on Old National. It also gets us highlighted by the state, so they obviously put a lot of emphasis on the Main Street Programs and promoting those. And so that's just from the aspect that we get from DCA. But then just the recognition that you have, that people know that the city is being very deliberate and direct about investing in the area. And so it signifies to investors that the city of South Fulton is really serious about revitalization of the area.
Just, I want to ask a question about dollars also. If you compare, we just had a, we just asked a council to approve, let's say fifty thousand dollars for an architect or a project, or a separate project. So those type of costs, we would be able to partner with DCA to alleviate. You know, that was a one-off activity of fifty thousand dollars. So that type of impact is, is very important.
Also too, I know College Park had a Main Street director and they, from what it appears to me, they've been pretty successful. Is it possible that maybe, you know, they can come and chat with us a little bit about their successes and best practices of what we've been doing as well as DCA? I mean, I think last council meeting postponed this because we were waiting on DCA, correct?
Sure. Yeah, we, we were hoping that they would be able to be here, we didn't want to keep postponing it. We would definitely be happy to bring any Main Street that I want to talk to and have dialogue around. I think that that would be fine. We do a lot of, Artie and I, Artie Jones, who's the Economic Development Director in College Park, have had conversations about some of the stuff that they're doing with their Main Street Program. So definitely that's something we can help with.
Okay, I have two more questions. How much of Old National Highway, is there a certain mileage or it does go all the way down to Fayetteville Water?
So we were proposing the same boundary that I think is being proposed in the DVA Boundary, which would include pretty much the four point five square miles that make up Old National. That's in, that's in incorporated city of South Fulton.
All right, and lastly, the MOU that you presented to us, it expires on June the 30th?
So, yeah, so you, where there's an annual renewal of the MOU, it goes in conjunction with your accreditation. So that is just the current one that cities are signing now. If we decide to do that, we would sign up and get on the calendar cycle and then we would renew with a new update. So that's just an example of the MOU that you would do with Department of Community Affairs.
Ms. Gilley?
Well, I want, I want to start out by saying that I think I went through it and I think it is an excellent project, but this is the far end of my side. I think that it really would have served us real good had we had an opportunity to meet for the second time with the consultants that were working on the strategic... I think that it really would have served us real good had we had an opportunity to meet for the second time with the consultants that were working on the strategic plan and gone back with them one time. And if they had been with us individually and then brought us together, then we might have really gotten a real good picture of what our city would look like. Because the districts are as different as we are and they make up the sum of the total. So having said that, Main Street might be an excellent idea for Old National. But I don't feel that we've done all of the due diligence that needs to occur for it to be a strategy. And for us to say this is something that we want to put in a plan because we want to do it there because it's very strategic there. And then the other thing is that, you know, some folks have gotten really beat up about bringing something and not having any budget. And I do know that this is all the work session, even all the work session, everything that we are doing particularly right now, given, you know, some of the things that we know is going on, should have a dollar amount attached to it. So we should put that also in the plan and, you know, to really make that type of decision. So that's really what I'm going to continue to talk about because I think it is extremely important that we have this overall overarching vision. And it very well might be that Main Street definitely needs to be, Old National will be there, that discussion. And I, I don't feel comfortable with the discussion being right against that. And so I know that Councilman Khalid talked about us having maybe another retreat. And June or July might be maybe a little bit too far away because I think we're like most people trying to maybe do a whole bunch of things too early. So I can't hear very good the, the, the way it was written really bad. So I'm repeating anything that anyone has already said. You're going to have to forgive me because it's really bad.
Thank you, Ms. Gilley. Dr. Robb?
One thing that I wanted to clarify, and I think you mentioned it in the beginning, Mr. Pike, that the Main Street program is distinct indifference from a downtown designation. In fact, when you look at this presentation, it shows like in the city of Atlanta, for example, they have multiple Main Streets that they've identified. And so it is, as you indicated, an opportunity for the city to get resources that we don't currently have for this four point five miles. And so can you speak to that just so everybody is clear that Main Street and downtown are not one and the same? Kind of have two issues that we're addressing to that?
Sure, absolutely. So for example, really the main reason why we even entertained this conversation with DCA is the fact that they even brought that Auburn Avenue as a Main Street program. So they utilize this four-point approach on Auburn Avenue in downtown Atlanta. So it's kind of utilizing that similar approach to, to what would be applicable to Old National. So it doesn't, so they're, just because a Main Street program, you can have a Main Street program and not even have a DDA or a downtown. You can have a downtown or DDA and not have a Main Street program. So the Main Street program is just a very tried and true methodology to really bring investment to an area. It's not something that we have to vet. It's not something that we have to kind of build. As you all know, I specialize in R and D, which is rip off and duplicate. So if we know that this is a strategy that cities all over the country have been using for thirty-five years, it seems like that would be a logical approach for us to utilize that for, for our, parts of our city. So, but it does not say, just because you established this as a Main Street program, that this is also has to be the footprint of a downtown or downtown development program.
And just to follow on, even if we, not to act on this because I don't know, that's just kind of simple. Have, in your conversations with DCA, did they look at any other areas in our city? Because like I said, I know you can identify multiple Main Streets.
Correct. So they have not. So I have to say, so the state does not call city of South Fulton or any municipality, say, hey, we think you should do this here. These are local legislative decisions. And so they're going to come here and say, these are local legislative decisions. So, but we called them trying to find out what kind of technical assistance that we can get. And it was offered up that the city of Atlanta on Auburn Avenue is doing the Main Street program. This could work on Old National. So they recommended that this would be a good fit for us based on things of the city of Atlanta. So we explained the dynamics. We explained what was going on. Obviously, when you compare the size of city of South Fulton, which is eighty-five square miles, and the city of Atlanta, that's a hundred and thirty-four square miles. You see the enormous, the enormous landmass that you have. They have various issues. And so just like Buckhead has different issues in Midtown, Old Fourth Ward, Bay City, they all have different strategies to revitalize those areas. And we would look to do some of those similar types of things in South Fulton.
Here's my follow-on question. If, for example, because it's, so I know we applied for a number like LCI. If we got that, could you marry that also with the Main Street program?
Yeah, absolutely. So if we establish an LCI, obviously, obviously, an LCI is just another strategy to help put investment and planning in an area. That's really the whole premise of what the Main Street program is, is putting these plans into action to create the strategies and the transformation in the area.
Okay. Thank you, because I think married together, they may power into redevelopment.
Great. Jackson?
Okay, last one. When can you meet the districts five, six, and seven?
We would be happy to meet with you all. I think that the city manager's office is trying to coordinate a meeting, as I understand. So we'd be happy to meet whenever you all are available.
I think it's with Gilley at House Call. Not with Gilley at House Call. Please turn your phone.
But to your point, Councilman Jackson, we'd love to meet with you all and talk about this. I think it's, it's really a great opportunity for the area.
It is a great opportunity, but it should have been talked about prior to the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Baker?
I don't want to eat a lot of stuff from our colleagues, but I do have a concern and it's a major concern. I think that, Mr. Pike, we've conversed already. I think you conversed with myself, Councilwoman Jackson, Khalid, at least to the point where you know where our passion lies. Am I, is that fair to say? Enough to know that Old National is our passion. And I think that what's going on tonight is, and I'm just going to say, is, is, is a farce between two positions that are, that actually hold our passion. And I think that if I'm not mistaken, when our city manager looks out to hire someone who does what you do, your job should be to do your best, to reach out to us, understand and really digest what our desires are. And then you try to enact or see or follow through to the best of your ability, our vision. And that's not happening. That's not happening because we're having a conversation about the DCA. We're having a conversation in the following minutes about a downtown development. And it's, it's, it's actually created a great area for our city because of, because our vision may be different from what you think our vision should be. And it's a, it's a major concern for me. It's a major concern for me. We did try to have a meeting yesterday and I responded to have this meeting. If, if, if you didn't, that's fine, but I responded to be a part of that meeting so we wouldn't be here trying to pick one decision against another. And I think that you could have done a better job to give us that option prior to Monday. Because this was a presentation that was prepared for us last council meeting, which was almost two weeks ago, clearly. And even the time prior to that council meeting, we could have had this discussion. So now what I'm seeing is, it seems like there's some divisiveness in what you know our vision to be and a secondary vision. And I think that we should, we should have had this conversation, given that we have access to you through the city manager a long time ago. And I'm disappointed that we're here and we have to hear this presentation and then wait to hear another presentation and just look chaotic. So to that point.
Well, so, Mr. Pike, I think I'll follow up on that one. So for, as far as the meeting, I'll tell you that that is one hundred percent your city manager dropping the ball. Mr. Pike had absolutely nothing to do with that. He does not schedule any meetings with council. That's something that my office does. And so with me being away at a conference last week, we tried to schedule it as soon as possible. We did have a preliminary meeting with Mr. Khalid when the DDA resolution came forward. So because we think that both of them actually could be married together if passed. They're not competing. They're actually complementary. And I think the Main Street program, while it's on the agenda as the Old National Main Street program, you can have Main Street, you should have Main Streets throughout a city as big and prosperous as ours. And so while I think that it is no question, I should have probably coordinated those meetings sooner. We also wanted to make sure that we met with you prior and we brought this great opportunity to the board council because there's a great opportunity to have a Main Street on, we just mentioned one area, but in District Two, in District One, I think throughout the city, there are opportunities for Main Streets. I don't want to confuse the low-hanging fruit of Old National's Main Street with not, with only having one. And remember, it is separate.
Ms. Alton, I got you. And we're lucky to have you. Because the same way you could jump on a grenade for us. I'm sorry. Councilman Khalid has been trying to set up meetings and trying to find out what this presentation was going to be about. Because I asked him, because I was out of town. The same reason, same way you were out of town last week, this was something that was going to be on our work session prior to this, two weeks ago. You weren't out of town then and the time prior to it. This is something that happens far too often. And now our public has to sit here and watch it and look at, look at us as if we're volleying two ideas and we're being paired against each other. And it's still the same. And I appreciate what you're saying and I understand it, but it's just not right. And if we, like, we need to fix this. And it's not all you, because we've sat in rooms together and shared our vision. And it's not fair to our people who are coming up here to just see how this is going to pan out. It's not fair to our city.
Are you?
Mr. Pike, you mentioned that there were studies done on our city. What studies have been done and why have they not been presented to council?
Well, College Park did the studies way before the city was even created. So these were, when I was looking at research on the Old National, we found out, so I think it was you, LI, someone did a study for College Park as a related Old National. It never went down to the unincorporated part. So when I mentioned that report, it wasn't the reports that the city of South Fulton had done. These are the reports that were done before the city was incorporated.
And so I'm a little leery on us moving forward on, you know, something that another municipality did because that doesn't speak to our vision. And one of the things I'm a big advocate for, and I have to agree with my colleagues, is that this city was built on self-determination and with the consensus of residents. And so we should not, if their, if their voices and votes were good enough then, then it's good enough now. And we should build a city with their consensus. And so that's why I'm a big advocate for the study and the process. Because that study is going to include focus groups and include residents. I'm not going to, I don't want the city built based on my vision or based on my colleagues' vision. I want it built on, based on the vision of residents. And so I don't understand, and I, and I mentioned this to you, we did meet, because I was a little disturbed that, and I do support the Main Street program for Old National. Because it does need redevelopment. And, and I think that it has, right now, it's our main commercial node aside of Cascade. But we also have a very important commercial node and that's Roosevelt Highway. And it's one of the oldest communities in the city of South Fulton. Plus, it's contiguous to Union City, College Park, East Point. I mean, everyone has a Main Street running through it. And what I do see is other cities redeveloping their areas. And in South Fulton, the Highway twenty-nine area being ignored, and we have major development coming around there. So I would like to ask that we don't ignore Roosevelt Highway. And since we can have more than one Main Street program, when you get that additional staff person, because I do understand you are one person, that we make that a priority, that we are looking at Roosevelt Highway for a Main Street program as well.
Well, to your point, you and I met last week to talk about Roosevelt Highway. So it's not something that we are ignoring. Definitely, we can have multiple Main Street programs, which has been established. Obviously, those positions will need to be funded and we definitely would welcome the opportunity to do that. If you tell me you want five Main Street programs and you give me five full-time Main Street managers, we'll put them to work. But to understand, if you're going to be part of the accredited Main Street program, you have to have a full-time Main Street for that particular district. It's not a part-time job. So there's going to be impacts. To your second point, I've built my whole career on community, community input. I've actually been recognized by the state of Georgia for community input. So I don't think that anything that I presented has left out the community. I've been a big advocate of making sure that we have community input and buy-in when we do a plan and any of these should have been. So even from the steering committee or any of the other projects that we do, a plan is only as good as the input from the community.
Mr. Pike, this Main Street program has not been presented as community. This Main Street program, you are hearing from my colleagues, and this is a violation of our ordinance that we adopted. It's, we don't even, it wasn't even communicated to us until tonight. And what, what our ordinance says is that whenever there's development or you know about development or if there's anything going in our respective districts, we're supposed to be notified within a certain period of time. And I have to go back, but I think it's within forty-eight hours.
Sure.
And so the other thing is, these Main Street programs, are you recommending that we do these programs in, in the interim of us getting through the strategic plan and the economic development strategic plan?
So the Main Street program is a mechanism to help initiate the findings that come with the plan. So that's why we have the Main Street program, because they are the people on the ground who help initiate the strategies that come from the economic development strategic plan.
So we're studying the entire city. Then why are we just honing in on one area of the city if that's going to be? I mean, why aren't we not just going through the process? I, I just, I'm confused because that, the strategic, the economic development strategic plan is supposed, is supposed to be for the whole city. The strategic plan is supposed to be the overarching plan. And yes, we have included residents to participate in the focus groups for the strategic plan, but why are we moving full steam ahead on this without?
So we're not moving full steam ahead. I, I, you have to forgive me. I'm using the work session for what I have been taught, the work sessions for, which is to present ideas to council to have discussion and dialogue around this item. Then from today, this, this is not a decision item. This is staff making a recommendation to the elected officials about something that would be beneficial to the city. Before, I, I. Before, I, I-
Excuse me.
I still have a floor, man. You have the floor, okay? But the thing is, it's for one area of the city. And I'm, and I'm not against this. I support Old National getting a Main Street program, but it's for one area.
Councilman Willis, as you know, we have different varying levels of strategies for each part of the city. We've had conversations about Roosevelt Highway. I've had conversations with other council people about their districts and about things that are happening. So, um, we try to provide information, make recommendations based on, uh, sound economic development principles that are based for the best interest of the city.
I will tell you, I think we, this is a point where we, we need some guidance. Because we, we're hearing different things from the council, and we're trying to be responsive, but I'll be frank with you, this is kind of tough, so-
Okay, well, let me give you my guidance. Hold one second, because I set up the floor. Let me give you my guidance. My guidance is, let's do this study. Let's include the residents in this study. Let's not just pick out one area. And let's come back, let the expertise, that's what we learned at Sandy Springs today. We are going to have to rely on expertise to help us through this process. We are going to have to work together and get on one page. What we're projecting in front of residents, we're not working together.
Clear guidance, I would ask, tend to a guidance, I think I'm asking for here. So, in the past, what council has asked is, do not bake out an idea, a concept, or bring something to you and simply ask for approval, because you haven't gotten enough information in advance. And so what we are doing, and it's evident today, and I think we want, I want you to look at the pieces that we're bringing, is we're saying, hey, here is an opportunity that we seek. Now, this opportunity is one that we can move forward on, we can explore more, we could put some things in motion, or we can say, this is not right for our city. It's not right. We'll postpone and hold off until you guide us to bring it back. And so that's what the Main Street program is. I think we had another item earlier today where there were some items in the budget that I think Mr. Malazi brought forth, uh, on the procurement piece. And before they bring it for approval, they want, hey, is this, we've procured this, this is the service that we want, this is what we believe we need, but before we ask your approval, is there nuances that we need to look at? Is there more information that you need? Is there more insights? And so in this forum, knowing that anytime we meet with four or more people, we have to do it publicly, we're trying to be proactive in bringing as many quality items forward to the council so that you have an opportunity to weigh in before we move forward at all. And so if, if that's not the method, that's fine. We just want a little clearer guidance, because we thought we were bringing it forward in the appropriate manner. If, if we're not, that's fine, we'll change it. Listen, that, that's not an issue at all. We just kind of want some clear guidance on the appropriate manner that we should be bringing this forward in that wet space.
Uh, Ms. Gill?
So, when you say bringing quality items forward, this is not quality items. We don't have all that information, we haven't done our due diligence. Mr. Pike has not met with the Old National Highway, uh, council representatives. There's just a lot of things that are missing. Same with the presentations earlier today. There are pieces missing in order for this council to intelligently make a decision on behalf of the taxpayers. So I do believe that we need to have quality items, but the, what we, what we were presenting today were not quality items. And, Mr. Pike, to you, how can we have a strategy without a plan? Where, where are we with the economic development plan? I mean-
At the last meeting, we voted to hire the firm. I think that the contract is with the city attorney and waiting to be returned to the firm to sign.
Exactly. So, when, when I'm saying this to you, what prompted the outreach to DCA wasn't because of the resolution that, uh, Councilman Khalid was pushing to put on the agenda to kind of counteract that? Because what I am seeing is that we're playing politics. I'm, I'm calling it out, we're playing politics at the taxpayers' expense. And it's not apopius, and we're not following the plan. And again, the communication is at fail here.
So, I, I, you know, want to make a clarification on that, so, um-
You don't have big clarification-
Well, well, because it's, I've been an elected official. I've seen staff people-
You've heard.
I've seen staff people be terminated from getting involved in the process. So I don't do that as a, as a matter of practicality, as a matter of seeing someone, seeing it in action. So, um, my job is to bring recommendations, aid to the city manager, then to the mayor and council, that I think will help move the city forward in a way that collectively, since I've been hearing, is the things that have been what we're going to do. So, that is the only ulterior motive that I have, is providing the best recommendations to the council. They'll move the city forward. So, uh, having said that, um, that's all I have.
Okay, uh, Mr. Khalid. Okay. We're going to take a break in this room. I have met with you, Mr. Pike. Um, we actually talked a little bit, I did not get to see this presentation when we met. Uh, I did ask, and I didn't get to see it, we actually met the day before, uh, you and the mayor opened the Good Will Store, uh, which I also didn't know about. But-
Let me correct that, I didn't open-
Okay, well, there was, there was a picture on South Fulton, City of South Fulton Observer, with, uh, several city officials in my district opening up a Good Will Store. Which, by the way, uh, the, the police chief, I believe, Chief Meadows, you're still, you're still here in the room. We really wanted that, we really wanted that area, uh, we really wanted that Good Will Store to be our police headquarters, because it was next to one of the highest crime areas in the city, that crime being car break-ins. And we were told, we were told to our face by the people who represented that district, oh, no, that's not a Good Will Store. Uh, so that's a little, that's a little problematic. But, um, I, I, I do think that we have to be careful not to feed up on our staff too much. Um, our mayor pro temp talked about that when, when, uh, we were talking with, uh, Mr. Malazi. And one of the alarming, I don't know if I want to say alarming, one of the surprising statistics I heard today in, uh, Ms. Marshall's report, was that aside from the police and fire and all of those, uh, technical, uh, you know, all of the people who, like, just work, they act, there are actually about like forty or fifty people that are managing this entire one district square in my city. I know that you all have a big job to do. Um, I do want to correct something on the record that I heard about, and it's, and, and facts and data are so important. About a year ago, actually over a year ago, I held an economic development summit. And I invited all of council to come. I invited the mayor, the city manager, had everybody there. Uh, Mr. Dan McCray, who actually does development and downtown development authority training for the Georgia Municipal Association, gave us a presentation then. So, from, from that point, I have been talking about economic development on Old National, and I took the initiative. So I think sometimes we have to, as council people, take the initiative. I've reached out to every single person on this council. Some people didn't reach back, but I, I, and in the city, I'm constantly talking about it, as to economic development on Old National. Uh, you mentioned the urban living institute, uh, urban land, I'm sorry, urban land institute study. I would just like to direct everyone's attention to my economic development page, which is Khalidcares.com/economy. Not doing that just to promote myself, I'm doing it because that study is on the website. There's a library of studies that have been done on Old National. It was not done by College Park. It was actually done in conjunction with the Old National Merchants Association. Mr. Don Windbush, whose name is on that report, is in this room tonight and can verify that it wasn't just for the College Park section of Old National. Because thankfully, there are business folks, like the Old National Merchants Association, who are just interested in Old National. They don't care what district it's in, they don't care who city it's in. They just want to see all of Old National get better. And I think that that's the kind of focus that we need to have. Um, if we want to spend another eighty thousand dollars for consultants to tell us what it sounds like, the state of Georgia has already said, and what our staff has already said, and what the Urban Land Institute in twenty sixteen said, I mean, we can continue to study it. Uh, but at some point, we have to get started developing the busiest, longest commercial corridor in our city. And we have, and this is a very important statistic I want us to understand, we have only fifteen percent of our land zoned for commercial development. So, the majority of our budget is your tax dollars. When we have to hire new police, when we want to build things, we are, we had a, a conversation about, uh, capital projects, and we talked about borrowing money and raising taxes, because we don't have a lot of extra money in, in our city. And so if there is an area that we are not utilizing to its maximum potential to bring businesses in to pay taxes instead of us paying taxes, that's something that we need to do.
Okay, uh, Ms. Gill, your honor?
Is it my turn?
Yes.
I just, I just want to add that, uh, it becomes a little bit overwhelming to consistently see, uh, things almost at the last minute that says, okay, you need to make a decision that you need to make it really quickly, because if you don't X, Y, Z, it's going to happen, then it's going to happen. That's number one. Number two, while we don't have a strategic plan, there is a plan, because it continues to, to go like it's going now. And that is a little bit of this, a little bit of that, and a little bit of the other. But still, there is, there is the overarching plan that is complete, with all the pieces fit in, and all the pieces do happen. And I understand everybody's struggle, because for so long, we have not had anything. And everybody really knows what they need in their districts, and it's really, really critical. But guess what? We've done pretty good to only be here in ten months down the road, or almost eleven months down the road. And we have a long way to go. And some of the things we really are rushing, and we're not doing a good job of communicating with each other, and we're not doing a good job of coming in with the whole picture, no matter what. And I know I made that damn horse, and I'm going to be a strategic leader. A little bit of this, a little bit of that, and less of this, and less of that.
Thank you, Ms. Gill. Ms. Ross?
Um, one thing I want to point out, um, I do think we, as a council, are sending mixed messages. Um, this was on a work session agenda, it was not for action, it was discussion. At the last meeting, I think it, it, it appeared, some of this stuff appeared as action, so I think there was-
No, it was all discussion.
But, but again, it's discussion. So even if the information was presented, um, we weren't being tasked to act on it. So, um, it's, to me, it's no different than we applied for at our last meeting, about six or seven LCI applications, we didn't have a plan. They're grant applications, we don't know if we're going to get them. And I think this is kind of the period we are in, and we also need to kind of take a deep breath, because we know these plans will not be done before the end of the year. But in the essence of doing nothing, there is an effort to move us forward. And I think, um, you know, this is hard work, but I think everybody, we need to be mindful how we respect each other and our ideals.
Exactly.
Um, we've gotten really off track with that, and I, I just think we all need to just check ourselves and how we speak to each other and the staff, and that's not, and council members, the whole night.
Can I have this gun, now I speak twice?
No, I was spoken to.
I was spoken to, no, I used to write them out.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, so first, let me clear this up. I was not being disrespectful, uh, to any of our staff. And my staff, and the staff knows that I'm not disrespectful at all. I'm just saying, I understand it's limited staff, but there's also a process that we need to follow that we're not following. We're all over the place, and it causes this type of chaos. Like, this room is packed in here tonight, because we got two items, and somebody put out the, oh, we're doing this about downtown and all this other stuff. And it was on the news. So we have members, we have residents that are in here confused, but also we don't have anything that's diffusing it, because we look confused. All I'm asking is for a professional take. We've hired professionals to do the work and to give us a process. Ms. Donald, I am speaking to you as the leader of our city office. I am expecting for this to work as far as professionals. We need a process to follow. I'm not, again, I just want to say, I'm not being disrespectful to staff at all.
All right, uh, Ms. Chris, Ms. Gill?
So, I just want to clear something. There are no mixed messages, just be a saint. Um, when we did the LCI, I sat and I met with, and what I appreciate about Ms. Reed over community and develop, development, she sat down with me twice. And she made sure I understood what she was doing, she made sure I understood what she was submitting, and she made sure that it included the vision that she heard from the residents when she came to my town all evening. And so I think what all of, what we are saying is that we just want better communications. We don't want stuff happening without being communicated to. And then if we hired, we approved at eighty thousand doll, eight or eighty thousand dollars for strategic plans to be done, then we need to follow the process, because in that process that I read, it includes resident input, focus groups. And so, and as far as economic development, I think that we need to look at it from a holistic approach. We need to stop focusing on districts. That was one of the things that we learned today at Sandy Springs. He said they got professionals, they relied on their staff, and they took one step at a time. They worked with residents, they got consensus, and they did not focus on districts. They focused on the city as a whole. And they did not play politics.
Okay, uh, Ms. Jackson, I got you, twice, what did you hear this show, Stephanie? Twice? This one. Go ahead, Stephanie.
And he also said what they dealt with was the worst. In other words, they prioritized, uh, what the things that they were doing. And Sandy Springs should be a role model for us, because, you know, it was hard for them to get started. And now they're what?
Ten, fourteen years old, eleven?
Eleven years old. And they, what, what we saw today, you know, and that was based on everybody working together. And that's what we're trying to do. And if I sound disrespectful, I'm not, but I would like to receive the same respect as representing my district. And if we're going to present something to, to us today, talking about Old National Highway, I would like to know in detail what it was, because believe you me, I, I go to my residents, and I let them know, this is what the plan is, what do you all want to do? That's how I, I, I present things to them. And that's what I expect, hopefully, from you. If you could convey that message to me as what your plans are or what you see the plan can be, then I can do the same, and we'll be on one page. Okay? Thank you so much.
Ms. Gill, your honor? I think it's been a few.
This is the third time.
This is your third time, Ms. Gill. Ms. Gill, it would have been your third time, so, if I'm not being wrong. Uh, you've been, you've already spoken twice. Let me, uh, let me close by saying this. I love Old National Highway. I've been on Old National Highway even before I became detective, Don Windbush and I, and a whole bunch of others. You think you got knocked bad. Back then, when we thought to get away, get rid of the six runway, you remember that, Don? When prostitutes and dancing was all in the club. And I respect Old National, I wish I respected too. Was thought was still in the club. I, I love Old National, but let me say this to you, I think this was good. Conversation is all-
Conversation is always good. And I'm telling you all, none of y'all said nothing on here that was bad. You just gotta take it, Mr. Manager and everybody, and take it and find out what process we're gonna use to make sure we don't have this conversation again.
Yes.
Because one thing I thought about is, we talk that stuff and everything about what the district and all this kind of stuff, we don't practice it all the time now. I'm just being real with you. We don't practice it all the time. And what we do up here, people see each and every day. They see it in the bank, Mr. Walsh. They see it in other, other government guys. And so, we can do it right, if we can do this right now. I like the Main Street. I'm gonna tell you one of the things I like about the Main Street is because you get a de, a designated person to run the Main Street corner, that's it. We didn't have that back then, Don. It's me and you, it's a motherfucker. But it gives you a person actually on the scenes for about eighty percent of the time. It is communication, Ms. Ms. Jackson, and I think why, and that's what we had this morning. I think everybody said something worthwhile. As I sit here and listen, what's that tonight? As I sit here and listen, everybody says something worthwhile. Now, if we don't take what was said and come back with something better, then we have failed. But I don't wanna have this conversation again. All right? We really, really don't wanna have this conversation again. Uh, I like the citizen participation in the, in the, uh, Main Street deal. You got to have citizen participation. It ain't your district. Ain't my district. It's their district. It's their city. And if they don't get it, they don't get a buy-in onto what we're doing. We didn't say Old National, Don, because we didn't get participation from everybody. We say Old National because we was all on the court and doing the work each and every day and believing the fact that we can make it better. And we did. Concerning where we came from. I like the DCA help. I like the DCA help. The technical support that we would get if we used this project. So, the only thing I see happen up here today is, is that I think that everybody likes the, the idea of Main Street. The only thing I see happen today, they said, well, y'all didn't really give me a whole lot of information about it. All right? Or I didn't get it till late. Well, let's rectify that. This is one thing we're try, and there's only one area. One thing we're trying to do now with this whole thing, I gotta interrupt. One thing we're trying to do with this is that we're trying to get the conversation up, going and over with. So, when it comes back, you were right, Mr. Baker. When it comes back again, it's a matter of just voting on something, what we're, uh. So, I think this has been good. Uh, I think a lot has gotten out of it and Mr. Manager, I think we need to go back and reassess and assess where we are. Okay. Next item.
Next item is discussion on a resolution to activate a downtown development authority and this is just council member's opinion.
Mr. Kinni?
Um, I wanna, I, in the, in the sake of time, I want to, for the sake of time, as we said, I have tons of stuff I want to do. I don't wanna waste a lot of time talking about what I, what I, I, I wanna deal with to my, uh, colleagues so that I can hear their concerns and I can tailor my comments to that. So, whatever concerns or questions you all have, I think that's really just, uh.
Question concerning the D, the DDA? Yes. Do you want to have any question concerning the DDA? Ms. Ms. Robson? Get in the queue.
I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to have the quick one. But can I just speak?
Yeah, don't worry.
One, I think we heard, uh, I know I got emails and calls. I think the, the public wants us to, to be good stewards of their money and let the data drive this process. That's the main thing I heard. And the second part is, um, based on the presentation Mr. Walsh made, I think whenever we do determine our, where our downtown is, we need to not look at a DDA but a urban resident, urban redevelopment, uh, agency. That's the way to do that because we wouldn't be able to fund any public facilities. And so, uh, another part of this presentation that really stuck with me, we only have the difference between what our current village rate is up to what's allowed in the charter. And so, we're talking roughly about five million dollars a year. And so, again, I think that goes to make sure that our economic development strategy marries what's going on with our, um, strategic plan and where we ultimately think about our town. They, like, they all have to work together to make sense. And even before we get to a downtown, I think we really need to look at improving our existing facilities. They, what, from fire to the parks, we had already prioritized. We need some major reinvestment in all of them. So, um, kind of Sandy Springs, they didn't do this overnight. I know from the other tours we, we took, one of the things I took away was at least once we identify the area, just buy the land and hold it till we're ready. But I think before we get to that, we, we need to improve all of our records, the record centers and all our fire stations where our employees are.
All right. Ms. Rose?
Okay. My, um, my concern is, number one, the residents are not on, on accord with this. If you start talking about, um, throughout the city, uh, I put out information after I heard on the news that we were, uh, hoping on this today. Uh, I put out communication to bring the residents in and the comments that I've read on social media and emails and calls, we're not, the residents are not on, on one accord with this. And downtown impacts this whole city, not this one area. Then we have, um, hired a consultant urban economist, we pay eighty thousand dollars. And what they're supposed to do is work with the residents and they're supposed to do an analysis on the entire city and bring back recommendations to tell us where City Hall should be, where our downtown should be, or whether or not we should have more than one downtown and where we should focus our redevelopment efforts. And so, I feel that doing this is putting, uh, uh, the cart before the horse. And so, we need to go through the process. And then, again, our, uh, financial strategist, like Council Rob said, is that, uh, we can't fund anything, I mean, we can't fund any government buildings through the DDA or Development Authority. And Sandy Springs said today, the mayor of Sandy Springs said today, they're, they don't even have a downtown development authority, they have a development authority and that develop, the development authority don't even help them that much. They, they got most of their, they, they did their city hall through warranty assets and through investment of their own funding.
Okay, Ms. Gums?
So, Council member Lee, thank you so much for, um, organizing that tour today. I learned a lot. Um, I definitely, being around the residents and they were able to really see the magnitude of what could be placed here in the city of South Fulton was amazing. Um, also to the information that the mayor shared. The only, I, and I put out something on social media because I'm very big on community engagement and, um, resident input. And a lot of them, as Councilwoman Lewis said, are very divided. Um, it's kind of, and I hate the, well, I'm, I won't say that. I, I just feel like we, we are so divided that it just kind of puts a, a black eye on Old National as well. And that was the thing that bothered me the most, the disparaging, disparaging comments. Um, you know, neighbors going back and forth with one another, all because we're trying to, what is it? And when, when, we in church, what do they say, order your steps?
Yes.
That. You know, I just heard that. I'm trying to get it in sweet things. But, um, I, I think it is important that we really take a step back and just allow the residents to participate in the process. Um, whether it be through our community engagement forums or something of that nature. But again, we need to have them to participate and that's what they've been asking for.
Let me, let me say one thing. Thing that got me, we talk about what staff gonna do and what staff gonna tell us. When I wake up and I had two o'clock on the TV and someone tells me that I'm voting on a downtown development, uh? You talking about staff or you voting? But that was wrong. I don't know who, I ain't caught, I don't know who did it. I'm just saying whoever did it, you was wrong. All right? And I'm saying to you, that created an, an issue with the people. And then, what followed after that was Ms. Gums asking for her little survey, which is fine. And I know, but Ms. Helen Wood asked for it, I guess it was fine too. But that's what really kind of inflamed a lot of this stuff. So, I would ask us, if we know, if we have something on our charter, on our, on our agenda that we know that we're gonna do something with, uh, they have charter two. Cause charter two ain't gonna always be your friend. Check me when I tell you this bill talk. It ain't always gonna be your friend. All right? So, that's what got me, and I just wanna put that out there. We're gonna ask staff to do stuff. They're, we got do right among ourselves, I'm not calling them down over there. I'm just saying, we gonna ask staff to do, to do thing. And I checked with the, uh, Communication Department, they say they didn't do it. That's all I'm gonna say about that thing.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna work backwards, but first I have a question because we talked a lot about community engagement and I'm just unclear, Madam, uh, clerk. Are we in the work session or are we in the regular meeting?
We're actually in the regular meeting.
I thought so.
And-
And so, we skipped over public comment.
We, we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
We adopted the agenda.
Go, go ahead.
We adopted the agenda with four items remaining from the work session agenda.
So-
And they, you asked that they come first.
Right. So, I think that, I think that there was a bit of confusion. Usually, when we start a, um, when we add things to the regular meeting agenda, we still always start the meeting with public comment. I mean, if we were going to, if we were going to put it at the top of the agenda in that way, then we would be talking about this before we have the implication. Okay. I think that should be directed to our, uh, determining quick as far as how we change that around. Because this was something that we've never done before. Can you explain?
So typically, you would- Typically, you would not have comments on workshop discussion items and then you put this at the beginning of, of the agenda. So, just with the normal course, you wouldn't have the public comment on this. But it's your discretion. If you would like to have public comment on workshop items, you can do that. You can just, um, you can table this, you can table the remainder of items and move it at the end of public comments or you can, can continue to proceed how you proceed.
Well, well, if I can make a recommendation, I, I wanna start by saying, we talked a lot about, um, and I just wanna say this before I make my recommendation. We talked a lot about, um, public involvement and having the public involved and having public conversations and open conversations. I think Mr. Donald asked us for some direction on like how we do that. It's important to understand that by the state code of Georgia, more than four of us can never be in the room talking about an issue without a public notice being given. So, it's really hard to bring in any, any topic before all of council unless it's in a public meeting. And so, I mean, we can, we can bisect people up into twos or threes, but for us to all be in a room together hearing the same thing at the same time, that's a public meeting. And the public is here tonight, um, and they have comments. And so, I, I would like to, to know if we could pause this conversation to hear from the public and then pick it back up so that they can be a part of this conversation with us.
We can do that. Another thing we can do if you really want to, uh, my issue, I can wait, I can put on the next meeting.
Well, I think, I think people have brought up, I think that the, I think that, um, there are people who-
I'm talking, I'm talking my issue, one on the-
Oh.
I can move my proclamation issue to the next meeting. That's not a problem because I wanna hear from them too.
Yes.
And they've been sitting here long enough. Just go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to table this conversation and, uh, move forward.
Yeah, she was up before you. She came, she-
I'm sorry, I, I, and I just wanna be clear about, about the recommendation that I made. I don't want us to table this conversation. I just want us to pause so that the public can speak. I don't wanna-
But I would take my analysis. Okay? Go ahead, Ms. Gillian. It looks like we're going to the, to the public comment. We had the public comment, Ms. Ms. Gillian. Yes. All right. Madam, go ahead.
Not the public comment.
How move that we, uh, move to public comment?
That we table the discussion on the pending item to after public comment.
How move that we table the discussion on the pending item to after-
We came here.
Copy, move to second, in discussion. All those in favor? It's because the time is down.
Awesome. I like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I like to make a motion that we, uh, do remove, uh, the mayor's proclamation, uh, thing until next meeting.
All right. I'll move the second, would you take a pause? In discussion, all those in favor? Okay. At that, your turn. Go ahead.
So, let me be clear. You want the public hearing, the public comments to come before the public hearing?
Yeah, right now.
Right now.
Okay. Public comments. Other speakers. Speakers must identify themselves and their addresses prior to speaking. Speakers may only address the presiding officer. Shall observe all rules over the court, no debate, disrespect or obscenity shall be tolerated. The presiding officer shall rule any such individual out of order that fails to comply with the foregoing.
How many cards do we have?
Nineteen.
That would take us over a minute. Uh, uh, colleague, do you want to limit, cut some of the time off? I think the last time we did that one, what did, what did we go down to?
A half, a minute and a half.
Minute and a half.
A minute, a minute and a half?
Uh, that's, a minute and a half for everybody? Any consensus on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, let's do a minute and a half each.
That's not fair.
That's not fair.
That's not fair.
If y'all would like, if, if the council wants to take it to two minutes, we can, but fifteen is our maximum.
Let them have two minutes.
Okay, two minutes, put it back. Thank y'all so much. You got two minutes?
The first one is Paul McCoy. Angela O'Monapart. Kwame Wise. Tiola Porch. And you remember you state your name, address, please, before starting to speak.
Hello, council. Hi, my name is Dr. Paul McCoy. I have, uh, my address to my business is six one seven Old National Highway. Uh, go ahead to Wal-Mart Chant Center. Uh, I was just coming to, in support of the economic development of the area of Old National. I do believe, I, I do personally have businesses in multiple districts, myself personally. So, I'm not just, uh, uh, into just Old National. But, uh, I think Old National is very pivotal, uh, to changing the perspective of the city. And for that reason, I think this is a very important place for us to start to change the trajectory of the city itself. Why? Because in my particular discipline, one of the number one things that I noticed is a short, a shortage in our community is access to medical treatment. Uh, and, uh, with, with our organization, that's one of the things we, we're wishing to be able to bring to, uh, to that area. We were, I've already, uh, for those who don't already have, again- We were, I've already, uh, for those who don't already have, again, have, have been there for seven years. So, I would definitely love to see that we would move forward with trying to get something done, because just honestly, from my perspective as a business person, I've been before the council before, they have been in great support, and I thank every one of you for all of your support. However, you have to make sure that we start to move forward, because what happens is with people, business people like myself, I have other business entities that I have. So, if I see a lot of just, just going back and forth, back and forth, what do I do? I just say, okay, you know what, I gotta move on to the next thing. Because for me, as a business, it's a business decision. I can't sit back and keep going in circles and not be able to move forward. I can't do that, and the, the, the community, I don't think, really wants us to just kinda go back and forth. So, I'm just asking that you would strongly consider help build, uh, uh, the, uh, Old National Corridor, as well as the others, because again, I do have places in those same areas. Thank you.
Angela O'Bonapart.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Angela O'Bonapart. Um, good evening, mayor, good evening, councilwoman, councilmen. I wanna start by saying that I grew up on Old National. Alright, I've been here since nineteen ninety-nine, since I was twelve years old. Um, being there, it's changed, it's changed a lot since I grew up. It has gotten better, but it is definitely still a long, has a long way to go. Um, I started off at McNair Middle School. My mom, she was like nah, she told me I was there. She stimulated crab apple middle school. And now I went to Riverwood High School, and then from there I came back down and finished up at Bannaker. And just going between those different schools, you can tell there is a noticeable difference in how they have the resources to do what they want to do with their students versus what Bannaker has. You know, so, there's that, and then on top of that, um, the Main Street thing, that is a good idea. It's a definitely good idea, because when you look at the crime rate, the crime rate is always gonna be higher where there is poverty, always. And that's just pretty much because people need to, you know, they need to make money. You know, so, I guess my thing with the Main Street, uh, thing would be is how can the residents benefit off of that? Because if that do go through, of course, the property taxes are gonna go up. So if the property taxes go up, that's gonna drive out all the residents. Not all of them, but most of them are gonna leave, because they can't afford the property taxes. So what, what incentives can we put into it for people who are local residents who wanna start up a business locally, so they can afford to continue to stay there? Uh, I guess that's pretty much it, I had listed questions written down, but my time's about to be up. So, thank y'all for listening.
Thank you.
Good af- Good afternoon, uh, my name is Teola Porch, and I'm here with unfinished business from the last time I was here complaining about the flooding. Okay, I thought I would hear from public works, so after a week, I didn't. So I called and now Mr. Venezuela, uh, Messi. He called me back, he wasn't sure what I was talking about, but he assigned Mr. Calvin, no, Marlon Jackson, came down to my house. And so, his first question to me was, did I have a layout or printout of my property? I feel if you're coming to assist me, you need the layout of my property, I don't need to supply you with anything. So, he had his little tablet, rice, thing down, and I was trying to explain it to him. I showed him my video. Uh, that was, uh, the twenty-sixth, I believe. I haven't heard from him since, nor anybody. So, um, that's my unfinished business. Uh, and I, I wanna speak on Old National. My eastern star chapter, me said, Chris Hall over there, and also on Garby Road. We have never had any issue when we come to me. Those kids that are standing around, they leave, they don't bother our cars. So, I, mine, uh, interaction with Old National has been positive. Thank you.
Uh, staff, make sure you have, when people have issues, that you get the staff in the back. Make sure that we talk to, uh, people that have issues before they leave.
I don't wanna talk to them, I'll talk to them last.
My name is Kwame Wise, I live in the, uh, the Meadow subdivision in District Five, which is right in the, that, Old National area. I, I've lived in the, in the Old National area for the past, uh, seven and a half years. And I chose specifically to move to the area because of the convenience to the airport and the interstate. A lot of people have a lot of negative things to say about the Old, the Old National Corridor, but I've seen so much potential in, in the area. And I'm definitely in full support of the, the Main Street Initiative and the Downtown Development Authority, because, uh, once we get the development in those areas, the businesses will come. And I'm sure that the, the Police Department has their plan to, to cut down on the crime, because a lot of people say, oh, there's so much crime in the Old National area. But I'm sure they're on top of that also. It's, it's just a matter of everything coming together to, to build the whole area up. So, if we can get the, the, uh, the Main Street Initiative and the Downtown Development Authority going at, at the same time, it'd be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have Barbara McGee, Glenda Collins, Isaac Cobb Jr., Kishma Shonelbrandt, and Michael McCoy. Could please line up at the podium?
My name is Kishma Shonelbrandt, District Four. I was first here on January eighth. I had an accident on December twenty-second, for which I was trying to file a police complaint. And so far, they agreed that the accident report was incorrect. Um, I actually have, I ordered a, um, report, open records request, and I have a recording of the firefighter that hit me, uh, uh, apologizing and admitting to him being wrong. But I'm still waiting to get my amended police report. And, I'm asking mayor, can you help me?
Look to your right.
Well, I've been, I've been in contact with, um, uh, Captain Cotton Tooth.
Look to your right.
Bless her heart, she's been trying to help me.
Look to your right.
I know.
That's a cheat.
I know.
So, she's gonna take care of you to see.
I need a report.
She gonna take care of you.
Glenda Collins, District Five, good evening, mayor and council. Although I was not able to ride the bus to Santa Springs due to the overflow, but this shows a great interest in our city. I certainly hope the infrastructure was closely look, was closely looked at. The traffic problems that exist and the additional type of lanes that are being added, such as bike lanes, walking trails, and et cetera. The lanes for cars to travel should not be reduced in size to make bike lanes. In addition, you must consider the fact that there are deliveries to be made to businesses and many other functions that take place to maintain a city. Accommodations are needed in these situations. All the types of lanes and areas should be added during the initial phase of planning and not five to ten years down the road after traffic has become unbearable. Since modern buses aren't in the area, then you should consider many parks and rides. In addition, you should install traffic lights in areas where traffic has increased and not await until citizens lose their lives. If traffic studies are needed, please listen to the citizens and do not hesitate to work with DOT in order to improve the safety and flow of traffic. I want to thank the city for all the paved streets in the city. However, I have issues with the cement caps or the cul-de-sacs that were damaged during the paving. I have contacted Mr. Venezuela and others, but the issues have still not been resolved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Isaac Cobb. Michael McCoy.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Isaac Cobb, I am in District Four, and I live at the LeJardim, uh, subdivision. I have lived in the city of South Fulton since, uh, two thousand seventeen, February. Um, I'm, I believe in being very, uh, active in my community. I am the, uh, neighborhood watch liaison for my community. I'm the HOA vice president for my community. And, you know, I believe that, uh, being a part of, of City of South Fulton doesn't mean that I'm just a part of City of South Fulton, District Four. I believe that if there's any lack in any part of the, of the city, then there's lack for the whole city. So, with that being said, I am in full support of the downtown development of, of Old National Highway. I, I shop over there, I don't just stay in my sectioned area. I, I, I'm over there all the time to get food. Um, Golden Crust is my favorite over there. So, you know, I like to go over in that area, and I see so much potential over there. So I, I think that it would behoove us to at least take a look at exploring the opportunity of developing that area. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm not trouble. Okay, let me, let me explain it this way.
Excuse me, sir, you stated-
Michael McCoy, District Three.
Thank you.
I trained at the Del Taco on Old National. I worked at the service merchandise on Old National. That was my, my steak and L. That was my Red Lobster, that was my Blockbuster, that was my Turtle Records. I'm not new here, I've been here, okay? A lot of you guys don't even know what I'm talking about, that's okay. Alright? I've been here a while. Big business left Old National, hurt my heart. I didn't ask them to, they don't want to come back. Where do they want to come to? Apparently Camp Creek. We just got Burlington Coastering. My wife said it'd never happen, it happened. If I want people to come play for the Hawks, I say, come play for the Hawks. They go, oh, no, uh-uh, Hawks suck. Come play for the Lakers, they suck too. We got LeBron, whoa, KD wants to come, Kyrie wants to come, everybody wants to come to where they think success is happening. Our LeBron happens to be Camp Creek. I live one block off of Roosevelt. Why am I not here saying, ooh, our LeBron is Roosevelt? 'Cause it isn't. But once you establish that you're a winner, and everybody that gets off that, that airplane and comes up that street and sees the brand-new city, and they go, oh my goodness, you guys got it going on. I wanna be part of that, I wanna spend my money there, I wanna bring my organization there. I wanna build a building to put my law firm and my hospital, I wanna do that. But they don't want to do it on Old National. I don't particularly wanna go with Old National. But guess what? That is a prime piece of property that one day will thrive. But we can't bring business to the new city selling the old thing, okay? It doesn't work that way. Let's develop the part that everybody wants to be a part of, that wants to put their money into it, and they say, that's a little expensive? We got some other opportunities on Old National and Roosevelt, they don't cost you as much, and they're a prime property also. Thank you.
Amen. Blanche Smith, Ivory Denson, Wayman Harley, Brenda Jenkins.
Good evening, mayor and council persons. Uh, my name is Blanche Smith, I live in the Solos Landing subdivision in District One. I came specifically regarding the proposed legislation to designate Old National Highway as our city's downtown. Um, my understanding is that this body in March approved up to eighty thousand dollars to pay a consulting firm to develop a comprehensive economic development plan for the city. So if you decided last month that you needed a plan, I'm not sure why we're doing one-off projects at this juncture, okay? Um, before we start spending time, resources, and committing budget dollars to any one project, let's look at all of the City of South Fulton. Let's look at what we need to prioritize. Um, I live in the Cascade area, and I'm very proud of it. It's a very professional-looking area. It has an overlay district, a lot of the businesses balked because they had to be brick. But guess what? When you drive down Cascade, you almost think you're in North Atlanta. Okay? And, and that's because the residents, when we moved in, we made the businesses do what they needed to do. I called code enforcement in front of the golf course, I said, it looks like collard greens. You need to trim the rightway. We went to the businesses and said, you need to empty your trash. And, in my opinion, you know, that's a possibility for the downtown area. I'm not an economic development specialist, but like the man said, uh, before, let's look at what we already have and make it better, and let that be the beacon that people want to come to. So, I'm just saying, if y'all wanna to spend eighty grand on a plan, let the people do their work. Thank you. My girl, I'm, I'm sorry, it's a call.
Good evening, my name is Ivory Denson, I live on Vandiver Road in the city. Uh, I am here tonight because I received several calls, uh, about what happened in a previous meeting. And, in the parlance of street language, it said that it was a beat-down. I'm gonna dress up a little bit and say, well, what was described to me was a berating of our chief financial officer. I found it very disappointing, but what I was told, and very unprofessional. I expect better from my councilmen and women, and also from my mayor. This does not make any sense, to behave a certain manner. Uh, I think that, um, the means I have attended and listened to the report, I think we're quite fortunate to have a CFO that is as qualified as, uh, Mr. Malazi is. Uh, I don't know whether he needs this job, uh, but I think that the city needs him. I have lived through when we're not cooperating, and I know what happens when monies are not spent well, when, uh, things are not budgeted. I can tell you, the, the Fulton County Commissioners, who went to jail for their issue, Michael Hightower, Chuck Williams, Rachel Eas, I don't wanna see this happen to this new city, I don't. Now, you talk about Santa Springs. Yes, Santa Springs, there's something maybe we should have done, that is, they hired an outside, uh, company to run their city for, I think it was three years or so. Because it looks like we are having so many issues, and the unprofessionalism is very, very disturbing. I hope that you all would take my comment in the spirit in which I'm giving it, and that is for this to be a respectable, uh, and well-run city, and particularly from a financial perspective. You say that, um, officials are being targeted, but you can only be targeted when you're targetable. And as I said before, those three people had financial issues and wound up in, in prison. I hope that something happened to any, any of our council people, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Wayman Harley, District Two. I'm Hurst subdivision. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council member, good evening, the community and businesses. I don't oppose to Old National. I have done my due diligence about Old National. But as far as the downtown city, yes- around the Wood Creek area that is government land, why hasn't that been thought of? But that's okay. I do know the value of District Two. Where I live, we have a twelve-point-five million-dollar house unsold, brand-new from scratch on Butler Road. Right across from it, we have about a ten-point-five million-dollar house sitting on Butler Road. We have Le Jordan Dean sitting at Ninety-two and Ridge in Butler Road. There's a lot of value over in this surrounding area between the two, three, and four and not counting five. I will say that we need to really strongly consider upholding the value of where we are and what we have invested in our city that draws many people here that's already, that's new and is not Old National Highway. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I'm Brenda Jenkins from District Seven. And I'm going to speak about something different than what I came here to talk about. I've been here since 515 and based on everything that I've heard this evening, my statement has to change. So clearly, Old National as a designated downtown area and Old National as a Main Street initiative are two different things. So considering that a Main Street initiative can be more than one street in a city, Old National shouldn't have even been in the name. And that's something that should have been presented separately and all of that explained in the beginning. Councilman Khalid, you mentioned that not four people from the council can be in the room without staff unless it's a meeting. Whatever ordinance that is, it really needs to be changed. Because we don't want to hear the back and forth. The staff needs to meet with the council and you need to sit in a room together and work through all of these issues. Because what we have is a failure to communicate. And there can be no communication, effective communication, if you go and see Mr. Pike or you go and see Mr. Odion one day and she goes to see him on a different day. That's not effective. So however, whatever it takes to change that ordinance, that needs to be changed. And those meetings need to take place before you come to the council. Even if you haven't made an agreement, at least you're all talking about the same thing and in the same way. Thank you. Next, we have Fred Devon. Paul Penn. Kevin Smith.
My name is Fred Devon. I live at twenty-two sixty Shanty Lane in College Park, Georgia. I've been a resident of this address, a homeowner, property owner in South Fulton for over forty years. I've lived here and I've worked here. And I came here today to go on the tour, but unfortunately, the overflow and legroom was short. So I came to the meeting. My topics were to be, speaking of accountability, I've seen this neighborhood change and all the businesses down Old National Highway and Flat Yoles on down to One Thirty-Eight have changed. I started out at HFC right there on Flat Yoles Road, Bank of the South versus Atlanta at the Atlanta All Auctions. That's what I've done. But accountability of the legislature. First, I'm sorry, I want to say, because I'm the mayor and the councilman. Thank you for allowing me to speak. But accountability, the budget, I've seen so many things I don't want to be taken advantage of again. The Main Street program, that's a good program, but we voted our councilmen in to do the same job that they're asking them to do. And all I'm asking is, when it's time to be elected again, that you do your job. My representatives came to us and said they can do that job, the Main Street job. They're going to revitalize Old National Highway. So I'm asking for what's the plan? When is the plan? What guarantees do we have? And what dates do we have? I'm getting a little tired of every election because I am the poll manager for Wilfham Mall Park. Whenever, when will we get the results? One more time.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, man. Thank you.
I am Paul Penn. I am an instructor for Atlanta Public Schools at Fulton County Jail. I teach the GED program in maximum security as well as another section where the inmates are more likely to move on with their lives at faster pace. I love what you're doing here. I'm deeply honored to be here. I'm here because Councilman Khalid was a guest at my church and he stood up and he proudly said, "I am a councilman at the blackest city in America." And I said, "What?" And I came up to him afterwards and said, "Is that true?" He said, "Yes, over ninety percent black." Well, here's the thing. We also have African-American businessmen and women who thrive to make the best of their lives and their opportunities in their businesses. And I believe that their potential is yet to be remotely tapped when they realize the significance of their heritage as Africans and African-Americans. And what I'm going to propose or suggest we give thought to is what's been pro-mine spirit by God. And that is the establishment of consulate row in the City of South Fulton. Consulate row is modeled after Embassy Row in Washington, DC, where countries from all over the world come to do business with the United States. Consulates are extensions of those embassies in regions around the country. And what I'm saying is that, can you picture this? I don't know which city, street you want to establish this on, but imagine consulate row, twelve consulates starting out and up to fifty-four coming, and they're all African consulates. Consulates that are opening their doors, saying, "We want you. We need you. We're honored to have you as our guests. We have more in common than we have apart." And our children who are taught that the only thing they can do is play sports and rap and get on the streets and hustle when they drop out of school now have opportunities that are embraced because we send them over on programs that receive by the head of state. I could go on and on, but I hope you want to hear more and I'd be honored to share it with you. Thanks so much.
Mr. Eric, we've come to the time of thirty minutes, but we have four more speakers. Kevin Smith. Emmanuel Ray. Doug Selby. And Timothy Bullard.
I knew the thirty minutes was going to come up when I got up here. Mayor, City Council, it's a pleasure to be here. I know most of you, I've worked with most of you in various capacities. Remember working with Dr. Wel and you were going to transition before it was even a city of South Fulton. With me, character, and integrity mean everything. And I can't speak about Roosevelt Highway because I don't live over there. I don't even live on Old National, but that's where my business is. That's where my church is. That's where my heart is. That's where my mentoring group is. And it needs to change. Mindset, terrible mindset, terrible direction from businesses that don't have the character that they should have to even take people's money. And we got to start somewhere. It might need some work on Roosevelt Highway, but we need to start somewhere. And I say, why not start on Old National? It's a great land of opportunity. And you guys remember what they did to Techwood? We don't need to let that happen on Old National. Because it was a Techwood, there ain't no Techwood no more. And all those homes and everything that's down there is changing and revitalized. We don't need to let what's great become extinct. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Always good to see you. I'm so excited about what you all are considering on Old National. When we look at Old National, we look at major stakeholders such as Walmart, Kroger, LA Fitness. Those stakeholders are pivotal today for Old National. If we don't invest back into that community, we lose those businesses. So I understand of the golden jewel of Camp Creek. I understand the prosperity of Cascade. Those are great. However, what you have, as you said, your number-one business corridor in the city in which it needs eight. It not only holds those stakeholders, but it also holds schools, which is what we're always forgetting about, those youth that are in those school systems. We have to invest and see investment within our own community. Not only those large businesses, they're small businesses. If I'm not mistaken, the mayor had his business on Old National. This is what prospers our community into being and our people into being those people in which we want to thrive to be and see future leaders in our community. Thirty years ago, the mayor was the president of this organization that I represent today. And I really, really hope that you all consider Old National. And we thank you all because as I stand here as the president of Old National Merchants' Association, I look forward to seeing all the economic development that is to come within this entire city. In fact, Old National suffers, this city suffers. It has a black eye. So the black eye is here. Let us resolve it and fix it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Doug Selby. I live adjacent to South Fulton in Gilford Forest in Atlanta. Would have been in South Fulton but for prior annexation. God, Mr. Edwards was my commissioner. I'm here, I am a public finance professional. I'm a lawyer. I do public finance. I've been doing it for twenty-five years. When I heard about the efforts in South Fulton, you being my neighbor, I wanted to help and work out. With respect to, I wanted just three comments. With respect to the laws in Georgia, I would encourage the council to take advantage really of all of the laws in Georgia. One of the important things about what the state of Georgia has given cities the ability to do is to create multiple agencies. Many of my clients have multiple agencies. They have a Downtown Development Authority, a Development Authority, Urban Residential Finance Authority. All of these are tools that the state allows you to access and they're all for slightly different purposes. URAs are an important, critical tool for financing governmental projects if you don't have a facility that would otherwise finance it. But what a URA may do, a DDA, it does differently in that it allows you to leverage private dollars into a development. So I would simply encourage the city to consider all the tools and I continue to offer myself out to consult for you. Good evening.
Timothy Bullard, Zimmerman Properties, forty-six ninety-one South Atlanta Road, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three nine. Honorable Mayor Edwards, other honorable members of City Council. Thank you all very much for allowing me the opportunity, especially as a non-resident to come up here and to speak. And the purpose of me coming here is to inform you all really of my interest as a private developer to come into the City of South Fulton and to bring development into the city and hopefully work with the city on what we feel, what my company feels would be a tremendous asset for the residents and as well as the school system. We're a vertically integrated company specializing tax-incentivized multifamily development. We're long-term owners and operators. So who I represent right now will be the people that you're dealing with for the long term. We're not fly-by-night developers who build, develop, turn it over to somebody else and see later. We're coming here saying we want to be a member in your community. I recently approached Councilman Khalid to assess the possibility of developing apartments in his district because I knew a moratorium that existed. And in some of our preliminary discussions, I was actually invited to attend a meeting of other community members where they were discussing the potential for a Downtown Development Authority and discussing their desires and hopes to see Old National take the next step forward. And we wanted, we had our own thoughts and ideas and in that meeting, we had productive conversations with those engaged citizens that are allowing us to think about other options that we think would be tremendous assets. And Councilman Khalid provided that information. So since I'm running close on time, I'll go ahead and wrap it up. I look forward to meeting you all again in the future sometime soon and thank you all tonight. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, that ends the public comments for this evening.
Where are we now? Member. Bring him back to table. I'm just going to go back where we table.
Coming back, yes. Bring him.
Oh, can you do one thing so we can just, can I just go and get the public hearing? I have to wait for the alcohol.
The public hearing and request for approval of an alcohol license, J and E Convenience Mart.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This department would like to present for your consideration an alcohol, a beer and wine permit from Mr., I'm sorry, J and E Convenience Mart at thirty-two twenty Butler Road, Suite One Seventy. Mr. Samu Lewis is actually the applicant in this particular case. And so, so far, he's satisfied all of the requirements by the city. So we just wanted to present that for the body for consideration.
The public hearing invited for against this.
Where is this location?
It's thirty-two twenty Butler Road, Suite One Seventy.
Not for this case. Seeing done, I'll throw the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve the alcohol license for J and E Convenience Mart.
Second, in discussion. There ain't none of those in favor. That passes. Now, Mr. Better, but we're back to the previous conversation.
We will continue the conversation on discussion of the resolution to activate the Downtown Development Authority. Councilman Khalid.
And going on, Mr. Khalid, you asked what input I think you're trying to add. Yes, I just want to address a few things that I heard. I think Tab is still here. Mr. Selby may have left. The first thing that I want to, the first thing I want to address is what a Downtown Development Authority is and what it isn't. This is not a vote to make Old National our downtown. I don't know who wrote the media that. I will just tell you, if you get your news about South Fulton from Channel Two, that's about a good place to be, gentlemen. The Main Street, so people like, "I like the Main Street, but I don't like the downtown." I don't think that people understand what those actually are. The Main Street program is programming for businesses that already exist, right? It's tree lightings and having things where we encourage people to shop in the area. It doesn't build anything new. The Downtown Development Authority is a financing tool. It's not about naming Old National the cultural center of South Fulton. It's a finance development tool. And I really hope that Mr. Malazie and Mr. City Manager, that we have a whole work session one day about tax increment financing because we heard some things that are actually untrue. Mr. Selby has actually written bonds for Invest Atlanta and he's been working with me for a year on this thing. So we've been talking about this Downtown Development Authority for a year. The things that a Downtown Development Authority can do is buy land and hold it. Other things that a Downtown Development Authority can do, and I'm not, I don't want to like bore you all at nine-thirty, but they can issue bonds. We heard about bonds when we visited the City of Sandy Springs. We met with Mayor Rusty Paul. They have a two-hundred-and-thirty-five-million-dollar, fourteen-acre They have a two-hundred-and-thirty-five million dollar fourteen-acre center that they built with PECO and then built with city-backed bonds. What that means is that out of those two-hundred-and-thirty-five million dollars, they raise sixty million dollars of that themselves. That means they have enough disposable income that over a couple of years, they put sixty million dollars away. I can tell you out of our hundred-million-dollar budget, we have a one-hundred-thousand-dollar contingency. And we actually spent some of the last, uh, meeting for the LCIs, and we got eighty thousand dollars in our savings. So, uh, one of the reasons that Sandy Springs could do that is because they already have a thriving commercial district. They get millions in property taxes. The King and Queen Building, that's Sandy Springs. All that stuff around, uh, Perimeter Mall, a lot of that is Sandy Springs. Chastain, Sandy Springs. Only fifteen percent of our property is owned commercial, and most of it is owned on National. That's the revenue that we're getting. We don't have one hotel that belongs to the city of South Fulton on Old National Highway. Five minutes from the airport. College Park, that too. So, what we're talking about is a, is a tool that allows us to build. And what, what Mr. Selby, uh, would have told you, can we talk about this in the work session? Is that the bonds that they used in Sandy Spring were backed by the city, which meant that the city and the taxpayers were on the hook. But there are different types of bonds that a downtown development authority can issue where private investors are paying for the development. By having a downtown development authority, we can raise capital to build projects that does not put the city on the hook if they fall through. In fact, one of the reasons to have a downtown development authority is sort of the same reason that individuals have private companies that are incorporated, right? Because you can go after the, the company's assets, but you can't come after my individual assets. So, having a downtown development authority allows us to do projects using other people's money that does not put the city or the taxpayers on the hook. So, I want to make sure that people, um, understand that. We've had lots of community engagement. Obviously, I've been talking about this. I've been inviting city people, uh, to the Economic Development Summit. I have been talking about this at strategic planning sessions. We took fifty people up to Sandy Springs on a bus tour today. We're having public engagement today. Um, the, the other thing that's important to understand about, uh, we've talked about why don't we just use, uh, citywide development authority? What a downtown development authority is, it draws a circle around Old National and says you have to focus on this area. The city of College Park has a development authority. They have a business, industrial development authority. They ain't got nothing on College Park. I mean, they ain't nothing on Old National. Everything that they built is in another part of the city. And gentlemen like Mr. Don Winbush and some of the members of Old National Merchants Association have been screaming for them to do it, but it wasn't a priority. Uh, Fulton County, before we became a city, has a development authority. We built the Southwest Arts Center on Cascade. We built, uh, Wolf Creek Amphitheater on Camp Creek. We got a Walmart on Old National. So, it's very important that we prioritize the development on, on Old National by having this downtown development authority that focuses on raising money to build things on Old National. Mr. McCoy talked about how people wanted to come to Camp Creek. Once again, I think political education is very important. People just didn't decide that they wanted to come to Camp Creek. Uh, the city at this point issued a TAD that made it cheap and it, and it incentivized businesses to move to Camp Creek. Didn't just magically happen. I know that Councilman Jackson was talking about doing a TAD. If we approve a TAD and the voters would have to approve the TAD, we still would need a development authority to oversee the TAD. So, I'll, I'll say my, my, the rest of these comments for the downtown.
One other thing, just to clarify, LCI applications, their grant applications. And one of the things that was pointed out when we voted on was that it would be in the next budget year. So, I just want to clarify that. But, um, I also heard from all the colleagues, I don't think there's anybody on this council who does not support the redevelopment of Old National. I think that's the first thing. That should be, I, I just think we're asking to let the, the process play itself out. And so, um, I'm assuming when we hit that economic development study, they're going to offer or outline a whole lot of strategies and tools that we should consider, uh, to develop the entire city. So, again, I, I just wanted, I wanted to say that because, um, I think the information that we heard in the work session, which was prior to your arriving, a number of tools were outlined in that session, the presentation that Mr. Wall and, uh, Mr. Malazie gave. So, I just want to put that out.
Councilman Collette? Okay, so, I'm going to come back and say a couple more things about the downtown development authority. The develop, I wish it wasn't called the downtown development authority. I wish we could call it the midtown development authorities. But that is what the state legislature called it. And by the way, Ms. Brenda Jenkins, uh, us having to meet in public when there are more than four people, that's not a city ordinance. That's a state law. So, we have to have the, the general assembly change that. Um, the, the, the most important thing about having a, a downtown development authority is that in order to be members of the board, you have to live in the city and you probably need to have a business on Old National. That is the group that we put together. You, uh, heard, uh, Mr. Tab talk about this, uh, housing. Uh, they came, they came to me, these developers came to me, they wanted to put three hundred affordable housing units on Old National. The first thing that I did was I took them to our prospective board of the downtown development authority, and we pushed them to make different decisions about the houses that they were going, that they were, the housing that they were going to build. The, the handouts that I've just given out, the first phase is going to be senior housing. We need senior housing on Old National. Uh, another phase is lots. They, we, we have convinced this developer to put lots in the town. There aren't lots anywhere in the city of South Fulton. So, that is what happens when community members drive development. This, this, this meeting happened, a lot of you didn't know about it. But those same sunshine laws that govern our city council meetings, they would govern the downtown development authority. If we activated this authority, every meeting would be public and everyone could come and see everything that was being presented. It would be no more developers coming to council meeting, to council members or mayor, or the mayor's private office. Everything would happen in the public view and everyone could have a, a say-so. And then lastly, I would say, this actually isn't putting the cart before the horse. Anyone who's done a bond development deal can tell you, my dad was here, he's done something for City of Atlanta. But it takes six months to two years to put together a deal. So, by the time that we get this study back that says you guys should start doing some development on National, we'll have to wait another two years, right, before we, or another six months before we can start issuing bonds. So, what we're really asking for today is to be a part of this study that's driven by community members. We want to take some of this money and do a strategic plan that is focused on developing this area because all of the capital projects that we want to do could be financed by business taxes if we collected more money from Old National, if we maximize the resources that we have. So, again, this isn't about a cultural center. This is about being smart, using other people's money to get things built and build up our taxpayers.
Okay, let me interject here. Uh, we all kind of, uh, we need to, if I was talking to the attorney, when we can do is table a conversation here, go into executive session for litigation that we have to get done tonight. But we're definitely in, in an issue where we have a time restraint. And I want to correct you things, Collette. Uh, we didn't do, pull it from our, from our, from the bond. We paid for that at our apartment. And so, did we, uh, so, did we give it up? So, the, uh, Wolf Creek, after, I wanted to get a commission. So, uh, if I take a motion to go and table this, I'm going to the executive session.
I move to, but what about all of these agreements we got out?
She said we have a very important litigation matter.
So, one of the issues that we've just been advised by, by Fulton County representatives that we really need to try to be out of here.
I already took care of that.
So, we can stay, so we're fine, we'll stay longer?
I already took care of that, but we need to try to move it some digits, we need to pass.
Okay, well, so, you do have two, you do have a real estate item that's very important. Real estate and litigation as far as your meeting tomorrow with the county, that's, it's very important for you to discuss. Um, it's your discretion whether you table it or not, but you do have the ability to table and, um... The parks agreement?
Go ahead.
Consent agenda is request for board apartments. Mr. Roosevelt had, uh, for the zoning board by Councilmember Gilliard. She's, he is replacing Ms. Regina Mitzi. Resolution to, for adoption of the Arrow Atlanta Greenway Final Plan. Council approval of a resolution to approve annexation fee waiver. Council approval of a resolution regarding additional pro temp judges. Those are all on the consent agenda.
I, I'd like to make a, a motion to, um, remove the, uh, council approval resolution to approve annexation fee waiver for planning. Because I have questions. I mean, and I, I don't think I'm the only one that has questions. Well, can somebody explain it because there's no...
Mr.?
Surely, we, we can definitely do that. You actually approved, uh, a no cost, a no, no fees related to the annexation of anyone who wanted to annex into the city. It expired on April first, and so, we're asking you to renew it because we have pending annexations.
Okay.
Uh, only, I'm sorry, did we have a more? Is this discussion, did we have a more?
This is germane, specific to what she...
Go ahead.
I wanted to actually change the, uh, date to three thirty-one, uh, twenty twenty, given the fact that where we are. So, they don't, y'all don't have to keep coming back because we know before the next session.
We would, we would definitely be fine with that.
Okay. So, we need to make that amendment now?
Yes.
So, I would just like to amend the date to three thirty-one twenty.
So, if you're, if you're...
So, yeah, so I, I move that we accept the consent agenda with the exception that we amend the date on the annexation resolution to extend to March thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty.
But we just talked about it. You had to amend it to, to the change, change of it.
March, their second?
Second.
Proper move to second. Any further discussion? I have one thing. On the, uh, on the, on the, on the pro temp, uh, judges, we haven't changed what you showed me, right?
No, it's, it's the two judges who have previously presided.
Got you, okay, I'm, I'm cool.
It has not been changed.
I'm cool. My two, Maro and whoever?
Yeah, your two, everyone who you've already recommended are still appointed. No one's been...
You're adding?
Yes, we are adding two that have, that have presided.
Why? Why are we adding, we have three judges, why are we adding two more?
Well, there's, there's two reasons that I'm aware of. One is administrative and one is, is legal. Um, the legal one is because they have presided. You do want to ratify the appointment. You don't want to leave it where you don't have anything that's authorizing them to preside. And administratively, I've been told that having a greater flexibility is to a variety of judges, um, is something that the administrative, the court administration would want.
Uh, can that move that we hold us until we talk to the court administrator? Can she, can you bring...
Yeah, I said because the court administrator is now moving toward, I think we have four days now going down toward three. And so, I thought the original conversation we had, first of all, I haven't approved, no, no, I haven't sworn nobody.
But the court administrator informed me that she had spoken with the mayor about this.
She did. Guess what I'm saying? It's just a little bit different now. I'm saying, and, and that thing is, I haven't, the only person I sworn in was, uh, was, uh, the, the judge we have now.
Michael.
Michael, Michael Sherris, the only person I sworn in. Now, I did some swearing in on Mr. Maro, I think. I'm not sure, but it was something.
But have they presided in a court? That's the question. And I think that's what she's saying, being that they presided in court, we have to cover our eyes.
Yes, absolutely.
So, that's what, that's not, we need for us to hold it. We have to, we have to cover ourselves.
Well, my reason is for the ratification, the other reason I was given by staff, uh, is just because they, they said they want to. Because the most important reason is the ratification.
I think, Mr. Baker, what you say?
I think this is something that we have to approve right now because they've already been presided.
No. Hold on, do I need to go to Q, ma'am?
I've been told that each of these have presided.
But would the, ma'am, do I have to speak?
What, yeah, go on.
What, what the mayor is saying is that he has not sworn any judges. So, how they presiding in court and they have not been sworn in? That's what, that's my question.
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking, can we hold this?
Let's stop, let's stop it.
Can we hold this?
We can't talk about it this second. And, uh, that is, that is a question we need to answer.
Well, I think that, that issue was separate from the resolution, but I, I can't address that as far as, you know...
It's a personnel.
Personnel-related, but I would recommend it.
Can we hold this until after we have the discussion in personnel?
Yeah, you can pull this from the agenda and, and, and hold it for future elections. I mean, it's your discretion.
I don't understand. I just, I move that we hold this until after, uh, we personnel, after the executive session, we discuss.
Well, we already had votes on the table, so we would have to modify that motion. If the maker of that motion is not willing to modify, then you have to make your motion after that's gone off.
Councilmember Ral.
Describe, describe, so you had to make the, the amendment.
I, I, I don't choose to make it. I think we need to follow the advice of our attorney.
So, what's your advice to, uh, approve, uh, hiring two judges? I'm not understanding.
So, my advice is because of the information that was brought to me that you ratified the appointments.
What information was brought to you?
Well, I don't want to publicly...
You need to go to executive session. Let's go to the executive session. Do we, we do have a motion on the floor. Is the motion to go to executive?
No, no motion.
Motion to go on, we have here. Yeah, go on the consent.
The current motion is approved the consent agenda with the exception of the annexation extension that's been proposed by Councilwoman Ral. But she accepts the additional modification and she has the ability to accept that. If she does not accept that, you need to vote on Ral's motion and Councilwoman Willis that then made her motion to remove that item.
I'm going to call for the previous question.
Yes.
Proper move to second, call for the previous question. All those in favor? That passes, looking back to the original motion. All those are fair. All those are fair.
The original one?
The original motion was to approve the consent agenda with the date changed for the annexation.
That's correct.
To March thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Yes.
Right.
All those in favor? That passes, uh, I know, five to one. With, uh, this, this, what is this? I mean, not going, no. Did we get her? She got it, all right, six. So, that's, uh, six, one, with Mrs. over this, four to no.
I'd like to make a motion to go to the executive session.
Hold on a minute, go ahead.
I think, uh, before we go into executive session, we do have one item that is time-sensitive. It's, it's a simple item, but it's fairly time-sensitive. It's the parks, um, agreements. And so, those could not be tabled and moved forward. We kind of need a decision on those.
Most of these are facility agreements.
Yes, those are, and, and I think we brought them back to the council just to ensure we believe that they have to be approved by council. I know sometimes they don't, but we believe these should be. So, I just put them on the agenda for that purpose.
Well, I indicate a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items eleven through twenty-seven, which are the, uh, facilities agreements. Uh-uh.
No, there's that, all of those.
What if, would, are all of those just facilities?
So, Mr. Phillips, could you please come up and just go through these items there? Facility use agreements and other items related to parks that are all removed and time-sensitive. Am I correct that they're renewed?
Yes, Mr. City Manager, you're correct in that seven, there are seventeen...
Well, we'll redo this first. Has a motion on the floor, I need a second. There is one, not, here's a second. What is the motion? The motion to approve from eleven through twenty-seven.
All right. Can I have a motion?
Proper move to second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Wait a minute, I got, I got Mrs. Kavie in the queue.
And I'm next.
Um, with all due respect, I thought that we had to be out of this building at ten. I understand, I understand that you have not extended, but I just would like that to be confirmed by staff. Um, this is the problem that I have. And, and I'm sorry, this is, this is germane because it's ten o'clock and we're rushing through... And, and, and I'm sorry, this is, this is germane because it's ten o'clock and we're rushing through, like, all these agenda items that we didn't get to. If we have to be out of this building at ten o'clock, and our council meetings continue to start at seven, and we have proclamations and pro calumny, that means we have two hours to have a council meeting. And we're going to have to adjust our agenda accordingly. We're either going to have to start earlier or we're going to have to accept that we have two hours to have a council meeting. And I remind you that our next council meeting is going to be a mid-year budget review. We're gonna be talking about money. And we're gonna have two hours to do it if we don't change our meeting.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Ms. Jackson, go ahead.
Um, number seventeen. And I, is Mr. Kirk, well, I guess City Manager, can I speak with you?
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, we had talked about, um, this particular, um, future seekers. And I understand you all said that the RFP was going out, that was in the spring or something last year. Um, I spoke with Mr. Kirk today. There has not been an RFP. Nothing has gone on?
So, there, I think we're talking about two different things. I can take a moment to clarify. There has been an RFP that is issued and completed. Mr. Kirk confirmed that today for STEM programming. The seventy-five thousand dollars in the parks budget, I spoke with him earlier this evening at this meeting, and you again confirmed that RFP is closed for STEM programming. You're referencing the facility use agreements, which are different than the RFP I just referenced.
But it's, they're, they're using the, the, our facility.
They are using the facility and...
And most of the people that are going there are from the city of Atlanta.
That is not correct.
Yes, it is.
There are thirty students in the program right now. Twenty-nine of them are near middle school across the street. I verified that today.
Okay, and when I verified from, they said it's a babysitting program.
No, ma'am. It's middle school students and they all...
The secretary, Ed McNamara, because she said her kids go there. And she said, I understand what you want. Believe you me, I've been to talk. I'm not gonna say anything unless I've already tracked, uh, uh, done a tracking. And I've talked to them, and they said it is a babysitting program, and they would like to see something better. I'm not trying to be, we talked about this last year. We talked about this from the beginning of last year, when they tore up the machine, everything. I'm just, I'm just gonna...
Ms. Jackson, we saw you approved it?
Yes, sir.
I mean, you have the right to, to make a motion for that.
I would like, I, I, I need to move them off.
Our intent was to bring these forward for continuity of services. On this Friday, on April twelve, Parks Master Plan closes. The reason we chose not to do a citywide solicitation for all programming is we wanted to go through that collaborative process and allow our community to help define the roadmap going forward before we started bringing a bunch of organizations on and find out that our direction may need to change. So, we want to complete the Parks Master Plan. It should be, I talked to Mr. Kirk this evening, in front of the council, our goal is to have it on the May fourteenth agenda for council consideration. Once that process starts, our communities, our elected officials, our city leaders will help us define what the roadmap for parks is. How do we do programming? How do we do youth athletics? We didn't want to sign a bunch of agreements with new organizations in advance of that, not knowing what that plan may be, and then have to change courses after the Parks Master Plan is done. This allows us to keep continuity of services through the busiest time of the year, which is summer. We do have a programming vacancy currently at Welcome Hall for baseball. There's an option on here for that as well. And so, our effort was to keep our continuity of services in place. It is. It's only, well, subject to council approval. There's a, an agreement subject to council approval for baseball programming where we have a vacancy. And so, again, there will be ample opportunity for us to reset the entire agenda for Parks Recreation as we define that Parks Master Planning effort.
So, to, moves back to Councilmember Jackson's concern, I think when you're looking at future seekers, to clarify, Mr. Phillips, are they, are they there for two separate reasons? So, I think the one item that she's asking about being procured, that's the STEM programming that they were providing earlier in the year. Is that correct?
The STEM, they are on a facility use agreement and the dividing after-school programs, STEM-based after-school program at Creel and Burdette, Burdette since last year, Creel for the last two years.
So, I got that.
The STEM RFP is a separate step.
And the STEM RFP that was provided across the entire city, that is going out, and it is in process, and you'll be bringing a recommendation back on the STEM programming in the parks. When?
May fourteenth.
But you're extending this, this, this use agreement is gonna be for how long?
So...
They need to be pulled off of this thing.
So, the purpose of the use agreement, not only will you be able to provide, so one, we don't want to have any interruption in services. You can also terminate the use agreements administratively as well. So, if Mr. Phillips gets a use agreement to be in, uh, Burdette Park for whatever period of time, you can remove Mr. Phillips from the use of that facility if you put another program or whatever in there. So, I think what we're looking at is trying to ensure that there is no, uh, lack of continuation of services, which is what these items are.
And that's exactly what our intent was, was continuity of services. So, we clarify options like the STEM RFP that just closed will be before the council on May fourteenth, and the Parks Master Plan, which closes on Friday, and will come before the council.
My issue is, we keep talking about back and forth, but someone needs to make a motion about what you want to do.
All right.
And get both votes.
I was trying to do it. So, um...
You got it, Q, Ms. Phillips.
I just want to ask, can we just, can I, who made the motion?
I have it.
Can you rescind your mo, your motion, and then we can just go through, approve what needs to be approved or what doesn't want? I mean, can we approve everything that, that we want to approve, with the exception of...
The facility. Can I, uh...
Go ahead, she has the floor.
Yes, I want to be able to say.
Okay, what I just heard you say, City Manager.
Yes, ma'am.
When the B comes out, then the future seeker is not, in other words, we can remove this use agreement in thirty days or sixty days?
Yeah, I don't know the terms that's in there. I defer to the...
That's why I wanted to see what's in there.
But, yeah, I'm, not, not a problem at all. I, I think that the purpose of the STEM programming is to br, is to provide that service across the city in all of the parks, but that has not happened yet. And so, if we were not to approve certain services, not just that one, but others that are on the list, then you have no service in the parks. And I think what staff is attempting to do is ensure we have services in the park that continue. And then, absolutely.
Well, can I?
Exactly. Um, no, um, Mrs. Guns is in it.
Okay.
I'm good, so you said it.
So, by whom are these contracts, are we locked in for a year?
They are for initial one-year terms. However, the MOU, the facility use agreement, and the structure service contract, all contain termination language with notice. I'll further the city attorney to clarify that, but that means we are not locked into these agreements. And anytime that the city so chooses, we can activate that termination language in the agreement and make a change in short order. So, no, to answer your question, Councilwoman, we are not locked into the agreement for all year.
Because I think, well, I know some of my colleagues concerned with the quality of these programs that we are offering, but not quality programs. And we, we want to make sure that we do a true evaluation, which I thought you were doing, of all of these programs.
Can I make a suggestion, Councilwoman Willis?
Yes.
So, you could also, um, if you don't like the clauses that are in there, you could vote to approve them with a termination, um, clause of thirty days' notice to ensure that any agreement that's in there, the city, um, is only responsible for giving them thirty days' notice, and then you can approve it as is. And if, if we, uh, go in another direction, the city has to give these into these thirty days' notice.
So, I have a question.
Yeah, Ms. Guns, so, are you thinking, Ms. Guns?
When, when are these contracts due to expire? Why is this, I mean, are they already expired?
No, they're due to expire at the end of the upcoming month, at the end of April, which is why we brought them forward.
So, we will have another meeting to allow you all to have discussion regarding city use, future seeker. So, I want to amend my motion and we, um, approve the facilities agreement from eleven through twenty-seven with the exclusion of number seventeen. For them to have additional conversations with the council members and wherever else you have further discussion. If, if the contracts are not scheduled for expiration.
Give a second.
That's exact.
Probably move the second, that discussion?
No.
I read it.
Ms. Cleese, that's my, that's my task, yeah, that's what you could have done. Just, if you believe in something, you don't want to be, to make the proper motion and get pulled. So...
Discussion. I'm looking at a copy of the agreements. They all contain a thirty-day notice termination in addition to whatever action the council takes.
You told them that. Up there. All those in favor? That passes.
All right. I'd like to make a motion for us to go into executive session for litigation, real estate and personnel.
Second.
All right, probably move the second, Ms. Phillips.
I'll, I'll entertain that motion. Need a motion reconvened to regular meeting?
I'd like to make a motion that we reconvene to a regular meeting. Second.
Probably move the second, that discussion? Hearing none, that, that's, he doesn't. I'll take the third, four. I can do that.
I didn't say...
We need to deal with that.
Go ahead, Jackson.
What Jackson said?
We, man, we got fifteen minutes, y'all. We ain't got fifteen minutes.
Um, we still have the, the council approval of the administration ordinance for the financing restructuring, the second reading.
This is second reading?
Uh, yes, that's what it said.
And then they had...
I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, the administration ordinance. They back there on...
Give a second.
Is there a second?
Probably move the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? That passes.
And the last item is the approval of the ethics ordinance, and that's Councilmember Willis.
She may want to hold that. Uh, Ms. Willis, do you want to hold the ethics ordinance thing?
Yes.
Okay, she wants to hold it.
When do you, you want to hold it till when?
Until we're in next, are you gonna hold it to the next meeting, Ms. Willis?
No, we have...
Uh, Ms. Willis?
Ms. Willis?
You want to hold it to the next meeting?
Yes, till when?
Uh, next council.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Baker, you saying something?
I have a motion.
Okay, wait, I'm not sure if you can figure where we are right now. So, hold on a minute. Uh... That concludes...
Any, that concludes the council agenda.
Okay.
Any, um, decisions out of executive session?
We need to close the executive session.
We've done that.
I, I entertain a motion to close the executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to close.
We've already done that.
Okay, did you want, what you want to...
I have a motion, basically. I'd like to make a motion, uh, to authorize the City Manager to close the investigation of the complaint filed by Milchell without further action.
Second.
Probably move the second, any discussion? All those in favor? That passes.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. A second.
Well, you have other items on the agenda, so you just...
We've already done that.
Oh, they've already tabled, okay.
Okay, I'll leave.
All right.
Can I go?
Here we go.
Councilmember Jackson, second.
All those in favor, let's go.
All right.
Be all right.
Bye, everyone.
Do we have to be done?
Yes, but, yeah, they...